Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk call the roll. Please do establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Laloie.
Here.
Councilmember Talamontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Maple.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Mayor Protem Vang.
I am here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Good afternoon again to everyone. Councilmember Kaplan, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely. If everybody can please rise. We're rising for our land acknowledgement, and it's for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous peoples and tribals' lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maidu, the Valley and Plains Miwok, the Potwun-Wintun peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us, still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Please remain standing to say the pledge. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, welcome to everyone. Welcome to my colleagues. Welcome to the city team, and most importantly, welcome to the public, both in the audience and those that are watching online or on television. We have a full agenda today. Let me begin by asking the city attorney whether she has any report out of the closed session.
I have nothing to report at this time, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. We begin tonight before we get to the consent calendar and our discussion items with a special presentation requested by our colleague from District Two, Councilmember Sean Laloie, with regard to the situation in Iran and the citizens in Iran. And I just want to thank you, first of all, for bringing this forward. You know, we, for many reasons, including giving maybe all of us some perspective on sometimes we fight here and we argue about many things, many important things, sometimes some not so important things. And then you see what's going on in Iran and what the people are struggling with, and that perspective is very important. So don't want to take away your thunder, but I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank all my colleagues for allowing me to get this resolution. And I'm very proud of our city.
Totally.
Because the minute I asked for it, Mr. Mayor, your immediate response was absolutely, and the rest of the colleagues were like, you know, absolutely, let's get this done. You know, and this resolution was ready approximately, I want to say about three weeks ago, but I held on to it in the spirit of Women's History Month and tomorrow being the International Women's Day, because they're linked. Just a quick overview, on September 16th, 2022, Massa Amini was laid to rest after being harassed, arrested, and ultimately killed by Iran's so-called morality police for simply wearing her hijab incorrectly. Since her murder, the women of Iran have taken to the streets in more than 133 cities across the country to demand their basic rights and freedom to be respected, making their voices heard and demanding to be treated with dignity. Mr. Mayor, we have a, I have a very short video I would like to ask Madam Clerk if we can play that. I greatly appreciate it.
Matthew, will you play the video?
To our brothers and sisters across the world, Iran is on the minds of many right now. Earlier this year, Massa Amini was brutally beaten and imprisoned by Iran's morality police because she wasn't wearing her hijab correctly. Amini died while at the hospital due to cardiac arrest. This led to massive protests across the country and by extension, massive government crackdown. Massa Amini wasn't the first victim of the brutal regime. No, not even close. The Iranian government has been inflicting terror on its people, particularly through the denial of basic human rights to women since the birth of its current regime. However, her death galvanized an entire country to action. It not only angered the people of Iran into protest, but it woke the world up to a reality which Iranians have experienced firsthand for decades. It was the last straw in a long history of hate, oppression, and violence. In the months following Massa's death, Iran's government has cracked down on protests through any means they deemed necessary. Protesters have been shot dead in the streets. Women TikTok influencers have utilized their platform to criticize the Iranian government, many without a hijab, only to disappear. Protesters, over 450 as young as 10 years old, have been killed in cold blood as a warning against continual defiance. The Iranian people have suffered far too long. By raising awareness, our hope is that more and more people will know and be able to help. We appreciate your help in spreading our message.
To the people of the world, especially the ones living in democratic countries, your leaders don't listen to us, but they listen to you. Remember George Floyd? Today, Massa Amini is Iran's George Floyd, but why should you care? Why should you stand by us? A peaceful Iran means a peaceful Middle East, means less weapons and financial support to Russia for invading Ukraine, means less sponsorship of terrorism. Today, in the streets of Iran, people are being slaughtered for fighting for their human rights. Let your leaders know you care about Iran because you care about your country. Connect us to the world. Be our voice.
As a student in Iran, I am deeply troubled by the ongoing chemical attacks on girls' schools across the country. I never imagined that my school, a place of learning and safety, could become a target of such a cruel and inhumane attack. These attacks are not isolated incidents but are part of a broader pattern of oppression and violence against women and girls. We demand that the international community take urgent action to address these attacks and hold those responsible accountable for their crimes. We need your support and solidarity as we continue our struggle for a future where all students can learn and thrive in safety and dignity.
Thank you. Again, I want to turn the mic to some of the wonderful people that are here in the crowd, but I think it's also very important for everybody to recognize that in the last week, two week and a half, over 100 schools in Iran that were only school for girls have been attacked by the regime with chemical gas bombs or poisonous gas, to a point that few have died. And the outcome of it is the doctors are not allowed to tell these individuals about what's in their blood. So they're expecting these wonderful girls and women that they will have some major future complication, whether it's cancer, whether being able to bear a child. And this is an attack on the women's of Iran, and that's what we're here today. It's the bravery of the women's that knowing that, going out there that they might get shot and killed, they're still going out there. As of a couple of months ago, the regime had instructed their Revolutionary Guards to use BB guns and only aim at the girls' and women's eyes and take an eye out. This is a direct order from the government to the police, which is our Revolutionary Guard. So it is very important, and I'm very proud, that the city of Sacramento is standing in solidarity and condemning these acts and promoting human rights, promoting women's rights, promoting the rights of LGBTQ communities, and promoting a free Iran. With that said, again, I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and my colleagues for allowing me this time. I'd like to turn the mic to some of the wonderful Iranian residents in Sacramento who have also been very active with what's going on. If you have any words to say, please step up to the mic and share your thoughts with us.
We would, of course, welcome you. And please do, we have about five minutes as we need to move on to the agenda, and this issue, of course, deserves much more than five minutes. And I hope we can find a number of forums that I'd be happy to attend, to advocate in any public way. But please take a few minutes, maybe a representative or two, to come on up and represent the community here. Please.
Right, right? There you go.
Right there. There you go.
Okay. Can you guys hear me well? Okay. Thank you for having this meeting tonight. We really appreciate it. The Iranian-Americans in this community have been very active for the past six months, and I didn't really have anything prepared, but so I'm just going to talk from the heart. My name is Sahar, and I have been in California since the 91. I was born in Iran. I came here when I was four years old, and I've only been back to Iran twice. But I'm a very proud Iranian-American who's been part of this movement since it started. We created a group called Gina Sacramento, and we've been protesting every week. We've been doing, writing letters to President Biden's administration, calling congresspeople, and we just want people to be aware of what's happening in Iran. This revolution obviously started with the murder of Kurdish Iranian woman Massa Amini, but it has led to so much more. This is a government that has been oppressing their people for the past 44 years. The Islamic regime has been in power since 44 years, and I guess this was the event that caused people to say enough is enough, and we want our freedom, we just want our human rights, and that's all they are fighting for to this day. So she was the spark of this revolution, but I think what, at this point of the game, there's, the Iranians in the diaspora are just wanting the international community and people to recognize what is happening in Iran and to know that without the, this, you know, regime, the entire world will actually be a better place. As our representatives, I think one thing that's very important is that we just want to address that the, right now, the power is in the hands of the Iranian Revolutionary Guard Corps, which is the IRGC, and they are responsible for these heinous attacks on children, on protesters. Currently, there's 19,000 protesters in jail, sitting in jail right now. We don't know what their faith is. There's over 60 people who've been killed. We have protested in front of UNICEF. UNICEF isn't doing anything. Amnesty International, where is the international help? Like, and right now, basically, what the Iranians outside of Iran are fighting for to help with the Iranians inside of Iran, obviously, they don't have a voice, they can't, we go out peacefully protest and we can get our message across, but they can get killed. So what we want the message to be to this administration, to the Biden administration, to the United States is, please stop negotiating with these terrorists. Please do not sign the nuclear deal. Please do not negotiate the JCPOA, because right now, Robert Malley is doing that as we speak, behind closed doors, he still wants a deal with Iran. And this is not a deal with Iran, this is a deal with the Islamic Republic. And when millions and billions of dollars keep getting in the hands of this regime, they will continue killing more people, and they will continue funding Hezbollah, ISIS, and all of those terrorist, you know, organizations that are out there right now. And it will just, it, nothing will ever get resolved. The biggest thing that right now, Congressman Jim Banks presented the Massa Act in Congress, and it's a bill, HR 9203, and it got reintroduced into Congress just a little while ago. It currently has a lot of representatives in the Republican Party that have supported it. We need more Democrats to support it. It is, this bill actually will impose sanctions directly to the President Raisi and to the Supreme Leader Khamenei, and it will impose property and blocking sanctions and also, let's see.
Okay, we'll make sure that we all take a good look at that.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the HR 9203 is basically what we want that everybody to vote, to have this act be in Congress. And, and just, I know I have like another minute left and I'm done. We just would really appreciate for you guys to be our voice, and I know I introduced you at the Capitol when you were there, and thank you for your support, Mayor, for being there that day. And, and let's just keep Iran on the, on the voice of everyone's mind so we can continue moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You know, to just finalize that, we just want to be the voices of Iranian people outside of Iran. And I think our being so unified, we're not looking for government reform. We definitely want a government change, and hopefully, that's the path that we've taken. So with that said, it gives me a great honor to present Mr. Golshani and Sahar at this resolution. So if you guys would like to come to.
Come on up, and we'll take a picture together and present the resolution. Okay? Thank you.
Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, sorry, just trying to fit everybody. One, two, and three, one more. One, two, and three, one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
So, Justice, hold there. There's a big saying right now in Iran that says, woman, life, freedom. Woman, life, freedom. Thank you. We'll make sure we pass them out. Thank you. Thank you so much. Very good. Well, as I said earlier, Councilmember Laloie, thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you for grounding us as we proceed with the meeting tonight. Pray for the people of Iran, and thank you for fighting for the people of Iran, especially those who are being marginalized, like women in the LGBTQ community.
And we're going to win this.
Yep.
You know, enough is enough. Human rights and equal rights, it should be mandatory across the world. It's non-negotiable. So thank you very much, Ms. Mayor.
You're welcome. So we move from the human rights around the world to the city's consent calendar, and all different, but all important in its own way. And so, members, are there any items on the consent calendar that you would like to be discussed or voted on separately? Councilmember Maple?
Just a comment on item 20.
Okay. Hold off for a moment while we get the list here from anybody else, anybody else. Okay. Go ahead. Why don't you speak on item 20, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to start out really briefly just to thank Amy Williamson for doing this project. This is the Guaranteed Income Project, amazing program, as well as Leslie Frischy and Lynette Hall. Thank you for the work that you're doing. This builds on a national conversation around guaranteed basic income and basically, how do we help folks who are in our low-income communities deal with things like inflation and rising housing prices? This is something that we're experiencing, obviously, here in Sacramento. And so this has been a pilot project that's gone on, but I think I'm really looking forward to seeing not only how this expansion of the project's going to help our impacted communities, but also what that data looks like at the end. So I look forward to helping get the word out, but really just wanted to thank them for their work.
Thank you. I'm really glad you raised this. This was part of our ARPA investment. I'm really proud of it, too. We've got two guaranteed income projects, one with artists, one to focus on the creative economy, and the other working with United Way on helping low-income sacramentans, and such a powerful idea. And I'm glad we're a big part of it. So thank you, Councilmember, for elevating that. Do we have public, go ahead. Why don't you move approval, Councilmember Kaplan?
Sure. You have approval of the consent calendar?
Yes, please. I got the vice mayor first, I think, here. Okay. Do we have public testimony on the consent calendar?
I have no hands raised to make comment on this consent calendar.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. All right. That gets through the consent calendar relatively quickly. Let's go to the public hearings. We have two public hearings, both dealing with easements. And why don't we take item 26 first? Who is presenting? Mr. Adams. Welcome, welcome.
Welcome. Good to see you. Good evening, Mayor, Madam Clerk, and distinguished councilmembers of the city council. My name is Thomas Adams. I am with Engineering Service Division of the Department of Public Works. The item before you is a request to vacate the 42-foot-wide public roadway easement by way of adopting a resolution to vacate an unapproved portion of 39th Street that is located between Sherman Way and Y Street. This area requested for vacation currently exists as an unapproved dead-end public road dedicated as a public roadway easement to the city that was with recorded map titled Platte of Wright and Kimbrough, track number 30, in the year of 1913, with the Sacramento County Recorder's Office. The applicant, Aspenwood Holdings LLC, is requesting this vacation of this public roadway easement for the purposes of private access to the proposed small, build-able, four-lot residential development for single-family dwellings units identified as in the tenanted map for 3901 Y Street. The city has no plans to improve this public roadway for future public use. Currently, there are utility services within the area requested for vacation, and the city's utility department and other effective utility service provide to support this vacation request with a reservation of a 20-foot-wide public service easement to maintain access, maintenance of the existing facilities. City staff along with various agencies support this vacation request. The action recommended with this, the action recommended with this request is consistent with the Sacramento 2035 general plan and is in compliance with the California Streets and Highways Code. That concludes my presentation at this time, and staff can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Adams. Do we have public testimony on discussion item 26?
I have one hand raised to make comments on this item. Margie Ballou.
Can you hear me?
It is. It's item 26?
Yes. I live at 3841 Sherman Way, and that corner of 39th and Sherman, we have a lot of traffic that comes up and down this street every day because of the UC Davis, the work at UC Davis, and I'm requesting that consideration of a four-way stop sign or even just on both sides of Sherman Way be also added to prevent accidents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay. Who, whose district are we talking about here? Councilmember Maple?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So most of the comments that we've received have been generally in support or neutral on this, but there have been a few concerns, especially around nurses and other employees at UC Davis Medical Center that are parking along the roadway, staying there for longer periods of time. And so I'm just curious if you think this will impact, you know, the parking situation, if it will make it better or worse? And then also wanted to uplift what Ms. Ballou said, is there a possibility of adding in addition related to a four-way stop?
I cannot address the four-way stop. I can look into that with our Department of Transportation, portion of our Department of Public Works, but the abandonment really is not affecting anything that is initially there, that's currently there. The development is near the dead end where there will be parking available for those residents that live off that dead end, which is now a dead-end street, a portion of 39th Street. So I don't see, and it's, the proposals for four residential, single-dwelling units, I don't see just the influx of those four properties that are not up near Sherman Way, they're set back, south of this area being vacated, to have a direct impact. But I don't have a traffic study or anything like that to provide, but the development is small, and it is for four residential dwelling units in that location.
Great. So thank you very much. And so I would like to make a motion to open and close the public hearing and to adopt the resolution supporting this item. It is just a, it's just a roadway that goes in, it hasn't been used by the neighbors, and I think it's going to add a benefit that we're adding housing to the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Is there a second? Councilmember Jennings, seconds. Okay. Okay, gotta, it's like Jeopardy, you gotta be quick. Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. Thank you, Councilmember Maple. Thank you. Mr. Adams, you doing item 27 as well?
That's it.
Okay.
Can't get rid of me when I come. I stay.
It's a doubleheader. Let's go.
I'll stick around. Well, the item I have in front of you this evening is item number 27, and it's the item before you request a vacation, vacate a portion of the pugway, I'm sorry. The item before you is to request to vacate a portion of the public road and utility easement by way of adopting a resolution to vacate two areas, 22 feet within length along L Street and N Street, specifically between 11th and 13th Street, adjacent to Capitol Park. Before I get into the meat of the background of this vacation request, there's a change or edit to, in the resolution in section five that I would like read into record. In section five, the last sentence says, "The vacation shall be effective when a city designee records this resolution in the office of the county recorder." We would like to change the wording to say, "The vacation shall be perfected when a city designee records this resolution in the office of the county recorder." And with that, on behalf of the State of California, the California Joint Committee on Rules has requested the vacation of a portion of the public roadway easement and utility easement for the purposes of the new Capitol Annex Building project, which includes an onsite ingress and egress underground parking garage with ramp access along the southern segment of L Street and the northern section of N Street between 11th and 13th Street, adjacent to Capitol Park. The design of the project requires the vacation of the public roadway and utility easement, which includes portions of the parking lane and along the southern portion of L Street and a portion of N Street that are included. and a portion of N Street that are included in a new Capitol Annex Building parking garage design. This request has been routed and reviewed by the affected stakeholders within the city and public agencies. Several conditions are required to perfect this vacation request. The applicant is required to relocate all public facilities within the area being vacated, and the applicant will be required to provide new easements for any utility services affected by this vacation and relocate it onto the applicant's property. In addition, the applicant will be responsible to execute an easement and maintenance agreement with the city for any future, for any features of property within the area being vacated that will be maintained by the city. City staff, along with various agencies, support this vacation request. The action recommended with this request is consistent with the Sacramento 2035 general plan and is in compliance with the California Streets and Highways Code. That concludes my presentation, staff can answer any questions you may have.
Here's councilmember Valenzuela. Do you want to make an opening comment, you want to hear from the public? Go ahead.
I have no hands raised to make public comment on this item.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. So, have there been any changes? I know there's been litigation around this project, is the easement still required? Have they made any changes that might impact this moving forward? Are you aware?
Not that I'm aware of. There's representatives, I hope they should be available here if there's any specific detail for the state that may have, but we're not, we're brought to my attention as up to the day of this, we presented this.
Are the project folks online, are they? I just would love, I know that's been a very, it's been a very closely watched project in my district, so I would love, I know the lawsuit was something that a lot of folks were following, and I'm not sure if the project design has changed in any way that would impact this. It's possible that nobody's there. Okay, well, I mean, I'm fine opening, closing the public hearing and moving this item. I would love to get any follow-up if they have it. I haven't heard anything about any changes that they might be making as a result of the lawsuit and the ongoing.
Well noted.
Work there, thank you.
Motion is seconded, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. That measure passes, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Adams.
See you in a couple of weeks.
I'll see you in a couple of weeks. Come back anytime, all right. We now moved item 28, which is an item we continued from the last council meeting because the hour got late, and we wanted to make sure that we gave this full attention, because it's really important, and so.
Notice I was pretty high on the agenda, so appreciate that.
Yeah, right, so you didn't have to wait till the end this time from that, there you go. Welcome to you.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Matt Hurdle, Long Range Planning Manager. So, this evening, you will hear the story of our housing policy and planning work, setting the table for future discussions with council. Staff is also requesting your authorization tonight to apply for a new pilot funding program only available to pro-housing jurisdictions like Sacramento. In April, we will present our Housing Elements Annual Progress Report, including the number of new market rate and affordable housing units that were developed in 2022, as well as a status update of the 49 adopted Housing Element Implementation Programs. So, backing up a few years, in 2019, staff got direction from council to implement a variety of actions to streamline the approval and production of housing. These 50-plus actions primarily focused on the levers under the city control, including planning for and allowing all types of housing, otherwise known as land use and zoning, housing approvals, otherwise known as site plan and design review and building permit process, fees and incentive programs, and obtaining affordable housing funding. As an outcome of this work, the Housing Policy Working Group was also established, and this group meets quarterly to get early input from a variety of housing stakeholders. And many of the completed actions focused on housing grants, accessory dwelling units, and streamlining the approval process for housing projects. Per state requirements, in mid-2020, the city initiated an update to the Housing Element, or the eight-year housing strategy. The remaining Housing Element, the Housing Streamlining menu of options were folded into the Housing Element Programs. Council adopted the 2021 to 2029 Housing Element, well, in 2021, and it includes 59 policies that set the city's housing policy direction through 2029. Also includes 49 programs to be implemented over the eight-year period. As an overview and update, these programs will be presented to council in April. I won't get into a lot of detail, but I did want to mention one of the programs that has already been completed. Program 11 is to obtain the state's pro-housing designation, and we can check that box clearly because in February of 2022, the city of Sacramento became the first in the state to receive a pro-housing designation, and this designation is a demonstration of going above and beyond state requirements to encourage the production of housing. This designation provides us with a preference for when we apply for state infrastructure and affordable housing grants, and an example of this is the preference that helped the city and its partners secure $50 million for the Sacramento Valley Station Transit Center last July. So, now there are 10 pro-housing jurisdictions in the state, including our friends at Sacramento County, which awarded this designation in February. As a way to incentivize more local governments to pursue the pro-housing designation and to reward those like Sacramento who already have it, the state launched the Pro-Housing Incentive Pilot Program in December. Based on Sacramento's population and the bonus points we receive for a high score on our application, we can apply for up to $2.5 million. Grant applications are due next week on March 15th, and city council authorization is required. These funds can be directed towards a variety of planning or implementation activities related to housing and community development, but due to the need to get more affordable units built as quickly as possible, staff recommends using the funds to assist with local gap financing for a priority affordable housing project or projects, and thereby leveraging additional funding sources. And in closing, staff is seeking adoption of a resolution authorizing staff to apply for, accept, and enter into agreement with the state for up to $2.5 million in pro-housing incentive pilot program funds. Thank you very much.
Okay. So, let's hear from the public on this item.
Thank you, Mayor, I have one hand raised from PJ.
Yeah, hi. I really like the idea of us moving forward on new housing, and I appreciate the fact that we are gonna be applying for those grants. I want to make sure that we do recognize the fact that a number of recent program failures that potentially could be addressed by this funding, one of which was the comprehensive siting plan, which kind of dropped from existence. The fact that a large number of the sites dropped away from being considered without a second thought and weren't addressed in a public manner to ensure that the public was, there was transparency with the public to ensure that we were aware of what was going on. That sort of thing needs to be addressed, and that sort of things could be addressed potentially by this money. So, I'd like to see priorities especially given to unhoused communities with regards to this money. I'd also like to make sure that we don't prioritize developer dollars when it comes to this sort of development. I think one of the reasons why we've been facing such a setback with regards to affordable housing is because we continuously prioritize developer profits, and the reality is, is that profits are incompatible with affordable housing, and in order to be a complete and robust community, we need to make sure that the investments that we're making are those that benefit all of us, especially those at the lowest income levels, and one of the things that I haven't seen is that being a priority. So, I want to make sure that these developer dollars go towards that to ensure that we can actually get some housing up that isn't necessarily dependent on whether or not a developer is gonna be able to profit from it, but to make sure that those in the lowest income levels actually do see some sort of housing coming their way within a reasonable amount of time rather than being left on the streets to survive and be harassed by our police. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right, thank you, let's turn it over to the council, turn it over to Vice Mayor Gedda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to first, you know, thank all the staff and everyone involved in the multi-year approach, even, you know, before the pandemic, we took on a number of initiatives that were controversial, but, you know, helped us get moving forward on expediting and figuring out how we can produce more, more of this affordable housing. I mean, one of the positive things, we wouldn't have had such activity now on, in areas on vacant lots in Stockton Boulevard that are built, that are, where we're having affordable housing being constructed if it wasn't for figuring out the, a better permitting process, a better streamlining process, and we can see those homes being constructed today. So, I wanted to thank all the, all of the different staff, both not only in planning but in the other departments for that. You know, I think this is exciting, I mean, this is what happens when we become a leader and look at an opportunities to take on new ideas, we also can beat other jurisdictions to the punch on funding, so. And so, first off, let me just, one, move the item here, but also, you know, follow up with the city manager on direction. I know that we've gotten to the point where we're, now we're planning, we're moving through, and I think we're still trying to figure out how do we fine-tune so that as we plan and get approval process, we can get through the construction process, too. And I know we ran into some snags as prices and costs for construction were moving higher. How can we make sure that we don't have time work against us when we're getting on the construction aspect of things? And I know our staff is figuring that out, both on the construction side and on the planning side, so I want to encourage that and support that troubleshooting. You know, most recently, as much as people may complain about, you know, the process in the city, we've actually, you know, they, the response was also was like, well, you guys are all better than other jurisdictions. So, the fact that, you know, we're moving forward, there's a recognition that Sacramento is moving forward on more production for, of all levels of housing, not just market rate, but workforce housing and affordable housing and extremely low-income housing. So, I think that that's a positive end on that. The last thing is, while very minor, and I won't say tangential, but parallel, that kind of competes with our priorities, again, this is more direction to the city manager, I know today we're talking about access for this grant to be able to do that, but one concern that I do have that I just want to plop on the radar is that it has come to my attention about some property owners that are taking advantage of the streamlining of the ADU process. That was a very positive thing that we did to streamline the ADU process, but now it's come to my attention that, and it may be an isolated incident, but the property owner is not only Airbnb, the principal resident, but all the ADUs in one area, which goes contrary to the goals that we're trying to achieve here. So, while we made it faster for an ADU, it can't be used, you know, there's one, obviously we have the compete, the reason we moved forward in that, but we just, I want to make sure, I just want to drop that there and make sure we look at that as we move forward. This is exciting, this is a positive thing, and with that, proud to move the item and support all of the different efforts on planning, on zoning, on outreach, on permit streamlining, and also looking at innovative ways to help finance and help support the gap financing that's in some of these affordable housing projects. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Talabantes.
I second the Vice Mayor's motion to approve this, and Greg and Matt, a year ago when we got this pro-housing designation, I was like, well, that sounds like a really nice word. Does it come with money? That was the first thing out of my mouth, and here we are now pursuing this pilot program. So, kudos to you and your team, and let's go get those dollars so that we can increase housing production in Sacramento. We gotta stay focused on our goal here at the city, and we just need more housing, so go get them.
Thank you. Councilmember Maple?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo my colleagues' comments, and also just say, you know, affordable housing and the lack of affordable housing is one of the biggest issues that not only plagues our city, it especially plagues my district, and it's one of the biggest concerns that I heard on the campaign trail from folks is that we are having difficulty finding housing that we can afford, and so that's why the city's doing this work, right, and why you are doing this work, you've done an amazing job. But as I've done a deep dive and educated myself on this, I've realized that, you know, one of the biggest challenges for affordable housing developers is to piece together the financing for it. It's very, it's very complicated, and it's difficult, and it comes with, you know, piecing together grant funding and, you know, just tax credits and anything else that you can put together, and that's one of the biggest challenges that we face. So, I think this is a really exciting program and hopefully something that we can continue to build upon, so I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to continue to compete for state and federal dollars. It's always been important, it's even more important now, especially as our local budgets tighten, it's, and we have our housing authority here who's expert at the federal level, especially in the state level, and together, I mean, we just need to bring down more housing dollars because we don't have enough local housing dollars to be able to subsidize all the projects we want, and we talked with the city manager about this a little bit today. In the next couple of weeks, I think we will be ready together to bring forward at least a discussion item and a report on the whole EIFD strategy, the Enhanced Infrastructure Finance Strategy. I know I, a year ago, I gave my State of the Downtown speech on the potential of doing a central city EIFD. By the way, the logic that applies downtown could apply to other areas of the city as well, and one of the motivations for that, for that idea was that we know what a priority housing and affordable housing is in our city, and we are always scrambling for the local resources to be able to help make projects pencil, and we've done some, let's just say, out-of-the-box thinking around this in a good way. I mean, look, last year, at the end of the year, we decided, well, we'll invest some of our risk management funding into providing gap financing for a couple of those projects on Stockton Boulevard. That was great, but that particular strategy with that particular fund is only gonna take us thus far, and I just want to urge us, because I know, you know, the manager's always asking, what are the, what are the council members, what's the council's priorities? This one is a clear priority. I mean, it is a clear, clear priority, and yet, we know the limitations in terms of the ability of our general fund to be able to participate. We've been lucky, you know, Measure U, ARP, the care funding, we've done a lot to build up that trust fund, now what? I know we're gonna have a robust policy discussion about a lot of different policy directions we can go on, but on the money side, I just want to encourage us to be creative and to be aggressive, the EIFD being one idea among many, because the more housing we build, the more affordable housing we build, the more we are helping people and alleviating the crisis that is the only thing I maintain, well, maybe there's several things, but it's the main thing that holds us back from being everything that we endeavor to be, is this housing crisis and the housing problem. So, 2.5 million, turn it into 25, okay? And LaShelle will thank you, too, but, you know, I'm just preaching here, because I don't think there's any dispute, right, on this dais, Mr. Manager, right, that this, that housing and homelessness, where we have defined our line in our limited role, in fact, we made a conscious policy choice at the end of the year, working with you to shift some of our emergency shelter money to permanent housing, but that was great, but that's one time, you know, that's all one-time money, so what do we do? Let's make this a priority. Oh, be, please, don't interrupt us. Completely ineffective, and I'm gonna ask you to leave if you interrupt again, okay? Don't interrupt me. Thank you. So, okay? Good job. It's good to be the first pro-housing designation in the entire state, by the way. What? Let's vote, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. Very good. All right, let's move to the youth liaison issue to city council implementation discussion. I'm gonna turn this over, I think, to councilmember Vang, Mayor Protem Vang, excuse me.
Yeah.
To lead the discussion, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't believe we have a presenter on this item, so I will be presenting my memo that I submitted and supplement to the staff report that was written by our city clerk and our city attorney, and so first, I do want to take the opportunity to thank Susanna and Mindy really for working hard on the staff report with the city attorney Kurt, who has been really critical in helping to draft the resolution and bring it forth to council for a vote in December, and now we are beginning the discussion around implementation, and so just wanted to, again, just thank city staff for your work, Susanna and Mindy, so thank you so much. What we're discussing this evening together as a city is historical, and it's really about our continual step to ensure that we continue to uplift and center our young people in the city, but most importantly, ensuring that their voices are at the table. Our city has really come a long way to ensure that we center our youth, and today's council discussion is to ensure that we stay the course. As I shared before in previous council meetings and in the community, having a youth voice here on the dais does make our city better, and it makes us as a council a more effective governing body. Over the years, I've shared that, you know, Over the years, I've shared that, you know, one of the main issues that I've heard from our young people, or actually, I would say, demanded by our young people, is that they too have a voice at the table, not just at our youth commission, which is an incredible opportunity, or on our adult-led commission, but really on the dais here alongside electives to help shape the conversations that's happening here in the city of Sacramento. I get a pointer, okay. I do want to make it clear that the staff report that was submitted by our city clerk and our city attorney is really simply an outline for an approach in creating and developing the implementation plan. It's actually not the implementation plan itself, so I do want to share that with my colleagues. But it does have items that I think all of us should consider as we move forward. And this staff report is really a beginner, a beginning conversation for us to approach how we would like to implement this plan. Nothing has been operationalized, which is why I sent my memo with recommendations so that we can really begin that discussion here tonight. I believe all of you have received my memo is also attached as a supplemental material to Item 29, but I definitely do want to take a few minutes to outline just critical points in my memo in response to the staff report. I do want to share, again, that my recommendation is simply, one, reaffirming what's already in the resolution that we voted on, and, two, complementing the staff report, but also providing just some deeper recommendations that I'd be happy to have a full discussion with the council tonight. And so what I'm going to be doing today is really kind of providing some of my recommendation to complement the staff report, really around timeline, youth engagement, possible reporting structure that we can talk about tonight, and potential budget. All of these items and factors, I believe, will contribute to the success of this young person who will be seated right here next to me. And so I'm really looking forward to the conversation we're going to have today and really want to ensure that we're moving this forward. I know that there are many points of conversations around this youth advisory liaison. The first piece is really around the age requirement, and so I do want to reiterate that in the staff report, originally, the resolution stated 18 to 24, but in our amendment in the December 6 meeting, we did make an amendment in that motion to lower the age to 16. And I support that. I think it's a great idea to make sure that we adjust it, 16 to 24. That's the same age also for our Sacramento Youth Commission as well, and I think it's important to make sure that we have alignment in that. Something I would recommend for this council as we think through appointing a young person is making sure that the appointment does not apply to someone older than 22, given that the appointment is also two years. And so I wanted to share that, but happy to have a more in-depth conversation about the age requirement. The next piece is really around youth engagement. As we heard from our young people over and over, young people make up 30% of our city, but they make up 100% of our future. I've heard that over and over again, and so as we're thinking about implementation, it's really important that we don't just go to our Sacramento Youth Commission as a checkoff box, but that we are truly intentional and that we're having meaningful engagement. Some of my recommendation is definitely making sure that we go with, we go back to the youth commission to really get their feedback. One is providing input on the actual job description. They should be assisting us with the design and conducting community outreach to young people in the city, and also participating in reviewing and selecting applicants to be forwarded to P&amp;P for recommendation and approval for the city council. I also wanted to share what I think in terms of infrastructure that's going to be really critical for the success. I've had an opportunity to discuss with the city manager on this. We've had some disagreement, but happy to also discuss it publicly and figuring out a common ground. But as stated in resolution that we voted on, I do support the commitment to ensure that this young person is established and supported within the Office of Youth Development. And a big part of that is because the Office of Youth Development is trained, their staff is experienced in this kind of a relationship building, and they have the expertise to support young people in the city. And while this young person will have direct access to all of us, I know that when we think about youth development, it's incredibly important that we have someone that is consistent in terms of check-in and having that content expertise to support that young person. As I've shared before, this young person, I hope we'll be able to connect with the mayor and council, but ensuring that we have the infrastructure in place is key. Something that I often share is that city managers, they come and go. All of us, as city council members, we come and go, too. And what's really important is making sure that we create the infrastructure that will be here permanent when we have young people going through this seat, right? And that's really, really important. And so I, my recommendation is aligned with the resolution and ensuring that the city manager's office, in particular, the Office of Youth Development, is involved in supporting this young person. Next slide. I also wanted to give shout-out to our city clerk, and just really talking about the role that the city clerk will play. I've had meetings with Mindy as well, and she's been incredibly helpful. Our city clerk is incredibly knowledgeable of the inner workings of the city council. As many of my colleagues know, when you become a council member, Mindy does the onboarding, and so she is definitely the to-go person in coordinating and assisting with onboarding, and definitely can update the youth advisory liaison and how the council works, all the rule and regulation. Again, but I do want to note, no offense to Mindy because she's incredible, while she's great at doing the coordination and the onboarding, it's really important to make sure that we still have a youth development content expert really next, working next to the youth advisory liaison to ensure their success. And this part is absolutely critical. Right now, P&amp;P really serves a critical role in making recommendations to current various city boards and commission. As you all know, they conduct interviews, they make recommendations to mayor and council concerning appointments. And given that we are the first city in the nation to have a young liaison, processes does matter, and it's incredibly important, and I believe, and I think it's also in a resolution as well, that P&amp;P should absolutely play a leadership role in the development and presentation to the council of the full implementation. My only recommendation is making sure that as P&amp;P is working through the implementation process, that the Sacramento Youth Commission and young people are truly part of the process in the development of the implementation as well. So that would be my recommendation. I shared this a little bit earlier. This is something that the city manager and I also discuss. I think it's going to be really important to make sure that this young person obviously have full access to the city council, but we also discuss that we believe that the executive committee of the city council, the mayor, the vice mayor, and the mayor pro tem, which the mayor doesn't change too much every four years, every eight years, maybe every 12 years.
Every 16.
Every 16, but the vice mayor and mayor pro tem does change. And I think it's important to have the youth advisory liaison really be able to direct, you know, for their offices to be open to support our youth advisory liaison for additional mentorship and policy support to ensure the city's overall strategic vision. And then this part in particular, I just really want to reiterate what was already in the resolution, but really just the role of the youth advisory liaison, right, and what they will be doing. They will definitely be attending all the regularly scheduled city council meeting, except for closed session and quasi-judicial proceedings. We've run that through our attorneys already, so they can't participate in that, but they definitely can participate in our regularly scheduled meetings. They will also obviously have a seat at the dais, this seat right here. They will receive the city council agenda at the same time that the material is provided to all the council member, and again, be invited to all the meetings that they are allowed to attend. Budget consideration. If you read the staff report, there is a recommendation to ensure that we also provide a budget. I think it's also incredibly important that we set this young person up for success. I support the allocation of a stipend to follow, to really allow flexibility and to compensate them for their time and their expertise as a liaison. This practice is also aligned with our compensation, with our compensation of individuals serving other city commissions, but the cost is a little bit higher because this young person will be attending all of our city council meeting, and because of the frequency, the stipend is increased. If you're curious about how I came up with 25, I pretty much just took $20 an hour, times it by 20 hours a week, times it by five weeks, times it by 12 months, and that's pretty much an estimate. I also believe that it's really important that this person also have funds available in order to attend professional development conferences, just like council members here does as well. We also have access to travel and tech allowances. I want to make sure that this young person have access to that, and obviously, they need a laptop and basic supplies. And so this budget was also something that I discussed with our city clerk as well. She did provide a budget, and this is just a sample budget for us to have a discussion. Timeline is also really important. I don't want, I want to make sure that this work doesn't fall to the wayside. I think making sure that we hold ourselves accountable to the young people of the city is incredibly important. And so this is a draft timeline that our city clerk came up with, and I just made some minor amendments, but just working backwards, you can see that, you know, we would, I would love and open to discussion with my colleagues for this young person to start next year in January. But if we want to do that, you know, there is a timeline that we have to follow, happy to adjust it, but I will start from March, because we are now in March. Today is doing an update from the city manager's office and my memo finalizing the age range determination. Hopefully, we can decide on that tonight, although I, we included that in our amendment in the December meeting, but happy to discuss it tonight again to make sure we finalize the age range. Sacramento Youth Commission will be meeting in April. I have spoken to the city manager and the city clerk. They're happy to make sure that we do a presentation to the Sacramento Youth Commission to really provide meaningful input, and then in April, P&amp;P can begin those conversations, looking at a draft proposal that staff will have ready. This is just, again, a timeline in June, hoping that maybe there's a draft implementation for council to approve. If you all think it doesn't need to come back to council and we go forth and allow P&amp;P to do the process with our Sacramento Youth Commission, happy to do that as well, but just wanted to do, to make sure that we have a loop around. And then in the summertime, we would do outreach recruitment, and then in October, we would do P&amp;P to review applicants in conjunction with the Sacramento Youth Commission, and then council confirmation in November, onboarding in December, and then January is when the term begins. And that's pretty much my memo that I submitted with the staff report. I do want to just share, again, that, you know, this is, you know, as we're talking about housing, as we're talking about homelessness, as we're talking about economic development, jobs in the city, I mean, we all do this because we want a better future for the people of the city, and that's the young people of the city. And I think it's so important to make sure we have a young person up here with us, helping to inform and shape the dialogue as we move forward and moving the city in a way that, in a way that really does not leave young people behind, who are truly going to be the leaders, going to be the next Daryl Steinberg, the next Howard Chan, the next Rick Jennings, the next Lisa Kaplan, right? We have to make sure that we create that pipeline. And so really hoping that my colleagues continue to support this, that we stay steadfast in making sure that, you know, we set the, we set the tone for this nation, that it's so important to make sure that we have young people part of these conversations. And so with that, Mayor, I will stop. Really looking forward to the conversation today. Definitely want to provide direction, but I want to wait until we have a fuller conversation, and then we could...
Absolutely. Thank you for the thorough presentation. I know the city manager had a couple of clarifying comments that I think will help as well.
Yeah. First off, I want to thank Mayor Pro Tem for spending some time with me today to talk through her memo, and really, it's less of a disagreement than just an adjustment I'd like to make for P&amp;P to consider, and that's related to structure. The way that it's laid out in the memo and the discussion in December had this position reporting to the Office of Youth Development and potentially through youth parks and community enrichment. I think really to maintain the independence of this individual, I think it would be best for this position to reside either as a direct report to the mayor council, to the executive committee as you've laid it out, and/or through the clerk's office as a, either a stipend or FTE, whatever P&amp;P decides. But 100%, a term we use within the organization is operationally controlled. So while it might reside in the clerk's office, for instance, it would be fully supported by the Office of Youth Development, youth parks, community enrichment, and for that matter, all the other city departments. I just want to make that commitment publicly and per our conversation that it is not anything that's going to change wherever it ends up residing. But I just think that in the interest of, again, maintaining that separation and independence for this individual to be able to, you know, really, you know, provide their feedback unfiltered, I think that's the better structure, and that's what I would ask P&amp;P to consider.
Okay. Thanks, Howard. I really appreciate that, and also would love to hear from my colleagues on that as well. And I think for me, the reason why I stayed in the resolution for the position to be within the Office of Youth Development is because, you know, I've seen years and years, when we want a young person to be successful, we need to ensure that there are youth content expert staff really supporting and coordinating and supporting this young person, right? We want to set this up for success. And so definitely hear you on that. I'm, you know, happy to have a conversation publicly with my colleagues and figure out where they think it may fall. If it's the city clerk's office, happy to support that if my colleagues want that, but I want to make sure that if it does go into the city clerk's office, that there is that direct support from the Office of Youth Development to support the young person because...
Yeah. If I may on this, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry, Mayor. Yeah, so I, I'm open to that. Would love to hear what my colleagues think first, but happy to also support that change if that's the direction that my colleagues would like to go.
Let me, I just want to speak on that before I turn it over, because I think this shouldn't be a controversy, because you're actually, in many ways, saying the same things. I don't want to, I want to make sure that if there is controversy, I don't know that there is, but that it's focused on the right things. In this instance, you're saying the same thing, because your proposal says that the liaison, the youth liaison, would report to an executive committee of the council, the mayor, the vice mayor, and the pro tem. And I think that's right, because this individual, though not a voting member, will be this side of the fifth floor in terms of reporting. On the other hand, what the city manager has said very publicly here today is that the organization, and in many ways, the way you suggest, through youth development, through YPSI, will fully support the individual with the trainings and whatever it takes. And then the city clerk can help, you know, administer the stipend and the other pieces of this, and I think that works just fine. The formal reporting would be to the mayor and the council, but the commitment, and we would assure it, of course, over time, the city manager's word, of course, is gold, that that person would have full support from, from the department. I just think that's right. Isn't that what you intend anyways?
Yeah, I think just making sure that we have that full support from content expert is critical.
Yeah.
We want to make sure that they're set up for success, right? That's what...
Right.
One of the things we discussed during the lunch hour here is really, I'd be even open to having this person sit next to our youth development folks. I mean, just to be really embedded. I think the formal reporting structure is important for transparency's sake and for the independence that you and I've talked about, so. So I don't think there's really any question about support from the organization. There shouldn't be, but I'm on the record here saying that they have the full support.
Okay. Thanks, Howard. Appreciate that.
Okay. Why don't we hear from the public, then we'll turn it to the, to the members for the full discussion, okay? How many do we have?
There I have 13 speakers on this item. So I have seven in chambers, Akin Oladai, I apologize, Miles Sims, then Jalil Baker. So if you want to come, go ahead, and it's time to present to the council. And feel free to line up if you'd like. Akin, Miles, and then Jalil.
Is it I or Miles first?
Of course.
All right. Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Jalil Baker. I'm a proud resident of District Four. I've recently moved from Orangeville to Sacramento downtown. I currently serve as the program coordinator for the Policy and Advocacy Department with Improve Your Tomorrow. We're located in a number of high schools in the Sacramento area and centered in Natomas. I wanted to strongly support the youth liaison position, of course, and the SAC Children's Fund, as this is a matter that's already been passed by the voters. We respectfully urge this council to continue to uplift this fund and implement this fund in a timely manner, and I also want to uplift councilmember My Vangs' comments and recommendations around the position, as well as just supporting a meaningful youth involvement in the implementation of this fund. And also, I have a couple of brothers from IYT who will be making their first public comment tonight. They're a part of one of our civic engagement programs.
This is about the youth liaison position, not about the youth measure tonight.
No, absolutely. And we believe that the youth liaison position will be instrumental in having a successful youth-led implementation for the SAC Children's Fund. So we have two brothers here, a part of our civic engagement program at IYT, who will be making their first public comment, so we're really excited about it.
Well, we welcome them.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Akin, and then Miles.
Hello, I'm Akin Olale. I attend Intercom High School. I am a part of the organization, Improve Your Tomorrow. We strongly support the youth liaison position and the SAC Children's Fund. We respectfully urge this council to continue to implement this fund in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Miles. And then Amano Rose.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Miles Sims. I am a citizen of Natomas. I am a student at Intercom High School. I am a student at Intercom High School, and I'm representing IYT today, Improve Your Tomorrow. I am here today to say that I strongly support the youth liaison position and the SAC Children's Fund. We strongly but respectfully urge the council to continue to implement this position in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Emiliano Rosas, and then Isaac Gonzalez.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, council members, city staff, and distinguished guests. My name is Emiliano Rosas. I'm the project coordinator for the Youth and Family Collective, an initiative by Pro Youth and Families. I also have the pleasure of being a representative of the SAC Kids First Coalition. On December 6, 2022, city council made history by creating the position of youth advisory liaison to sit on the dais with all of you. This was a huge win for youth in the city of Sacramento and helped elevate their voice in city policymaking. For the next steps, I would like to see the Sacramento Youth Commission play a significant role in the design and execution of the implementation plan for the youth advisory liaison. I strongly urge your yes vote in continuing on in the implementation process, ensuring the youth liaison is adequately compensated, and ensuring city staff start recruitment efforts before the school year ends, because high schools, community colleges, and university campuses provide enormous access to potential applicants. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Isaac Gonzalez, then Keon Bliss.
Good evening. Thank you, mayor, city council. My name is Isaac Gonzalez. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Sacramento. For informational purposes only, I'm the president of the Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association. And back in December, when this first came to the council, I called in for my support, to voice my support about this idea. And I shared with you at the time that the Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association had just adopted in our new bylaws that we would hold a space for a youth board member for the first time in our 30-year history, maybe an oversight in the original bylaws, but nonetheless. He was, this is my time now, hold on.
I remember fighting for that.
So now I will come back to you, and in January, we did take a, our first youth board, council board member of all time in Tahoe Park. So we have a really terrific board member, and I want to tell you that in my personal experience, already in just three months, it has really impacted our association. We have youth input and a backstop now to check that the ideas that we're putting outwards are actually going to resonate with the young people in our neighborhood. We've never been able to do that before. We've had increased volunteerism. We have just increased energy within our organization. She recently just participated in our annual board retreat, where we sit down for hours and hours and hours and talk about all the things we want to do for the next year, for five years, for our budget, what are our priorities? And it's just so refreshing to have that young voice included with us. Now, just like you, her, her vote on our panel is just ceremonial, and she provides a lot of recommendations, but why can't we make this space? It just makes so much sense. As the council member Vang said earlier, you know, this is our future, this is our community, and this is a great way to inspire people to be those future leaders. There's young people in here tonight who are here because this is their assignment for school. Imagine if it was just not a dream that one day you would be participating in city council, but you would really actually have an opportunity there. I think it's a great idea, and I just want to give my full support to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And forgiveness on the oversight, Mayor.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Keon Bliss, then Anna Toakolo.
Greetings, city council. Just wanted to lift up and support our youth communities and really getting a meaningful say in this body for issues that are relevant to their future, as well as to the rest of the Sacramento community. As it stands, you know, in this, in the United States, our, our youth populations are stunningly underrepresented in our decision-making structures. And even if it's advisory in nature, having that, like, having their voice in these decisions, like, in these conversations, especially on issues that are directly related to them, are vastly important. In fact, I would challenge this body to, as, like, as you are developing this position, to actually consider giving them a genuine vote on this decision. People as young as 12 are actually allowed to participate in meaningful decision-making, such as participatory budgeting, which you all just had a pilot of in the last year, and young, and people, community residents as young as 12 are allowed to actually participate. And this is a growing movement that is continuing in over 7,000 cities across the world, hundreds here in the United States, which with people as young as 11 years old, in places like New York, having, being able to vote on how public dollars are spent on projects and programs that will directly impact them. And it's, like, and it continues to build success. So as you're continuing to develop it, I just want to say I support this, this position being created, and want to encourage you to continue building on that, and don't set this as the floor, not the ceiling. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Anna Toakolo, and then Dow Vang.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the council. My name is actually Anna Toakolo. I'm here as a representative of the SAC Kids First Coalition. I'm also the director of youth programs for a nonprofit called Alliance for Education Solutions, one of the longstanding partners of this coalition. As someone who was born and raised out here in Sacramento, specifically in District Two, I've worked alongside a lot, a lot of different young people out here, and so I feel really obligated to stand amongst y'all today, just to tell you how much pride I've had as a young person in my city. I also know personally that when that pride is no longer there, and when youth don't feel connected to their city, it's a lot easier to disrupt, disengage, and dismantle systems that weren't created for them to succeed in the first place. And so I'm here just to ask that you all please consider to pass this process along with the implementation process and the recommendations that were just made to you all, so that young people can feel absolutely proud of their city, and also come to an understanding that their council loves and empowers youth voice for not just themselves, but also their families and their communities and the future of this city. Please consider putting your trust in young people, because as we always say, every single time we're here, that young people are not just 30% of the population today, they are 100% of our future, and they deserve a seat at the table where decisions are being made that have things to do with them as individuals. And so I'm asking that you all please listen to the Youth Development Plan, that title that was also created a couple of years back at one of our youth town halls, which Mayor Steinberg attended, when the title is "Nothing About Us."
Without Us.
Without Us. Nothing About Us?
Without Us.
All right. Thank you all so much.
Thank you for your comments. I have eight speakers online. I have eight speakers online. The first is Dow Vang, then Angela Maldonado.
Hi, I hope you can all hear me, but good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Dow, and I'm a resident of the city, and also identify as a young adult and youth ally. Just before I get started, just with it being Women's History Month, I wanted to offer my, you know, congratulations on another historic, historic achievement of being a majority-woman-led Sacramento City Council, and also being the first city council to establish a youth position who will inform council decision as well, right? With this, the council has made great strides to ensure that our youth voices are heard in city's policymaking decision as well. I'm probably going to ask that you continue this great work and support changing the age eligibility of the youth advisory liaison to 16 through 24, to expand opportunities for those under the ages of 18 as well, so that they could be more actively involved in the decision-making processes. And as council member My had said, I think this is where you could all, you know, intentionally get, and get the Sacramento Youth Commission to get more involved in designing, designing and also executing the implementation plan beyond just, you know, just giving inputs, right? They could also design the Irish campaign and lead Irish activities, and even screen applications or make recommendations of individuals to P and P, the P and P committee to consider, as My has stated before. Yeah, and I just want to respectfully urge that the city make sure that this role is also sustainable, and that the individual is adequately compensated as well, right? And that you are, you are, you are all supportive of this individual, so that they could also succeed in the role as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Angela Maldonado.
Hi, council. Good afternoon. My name is Angela Maldonado. I'm a member of the community, and specifically living in District Two. I'm also here as a youth program manager at the Latino Coalition for a Healthy California. We're running youth internship to provide support with learnings for civic engagement for our local SAC youth, and I'm also a member of the SAC Kids First Coalition. I'm calling in support of city staff working on the youth advisory liaison. I hope that the age range is aligned with the SAC Youth Commission. I ask that it please get moved to 16 to 24. I also urge that this person is trained, supported, and onboarded within the Office of Youth Development. I also urge the city to ensure that the individual is adequately compensated. I also urge the city to ensure that the youth advisory liaison has the support by city staff that they need to succeed in this position. And I'd love to see recruitment efforts start before the end of the school year. A lot of recruitment can happen at school and through word of mouth. If we can prioritize these rulings, we can stand course with implementation of the Children's Fund, and not only fund vital youth supports for the city of Sacramento, but also be a catalyst for the nation to reach youth health equity for the city of Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Noel Mora.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Noel Mora. I'm a community member and leader, and I will be very brief. I agree with all of our speakers and all the youth and youth advocates that have raised a lot of points already. So I just want to say I'm thankful to this council, to the leadership of council member Vang, and to our city manager for seeing the importance of this youth liaison position, seeing the importance of its timely implementation, and for being thoughtful with the process. And of course, I wholeheartedly support this with all of my being. So I just wanted to take the time to make this comment, and I look forward to hearing what our youth and youth advocates still have left to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Shazad Attaker.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, so my name is Shazad Attik. I'm a second-year mathematics major at UC Davis. I work for an organization called Improve Your Tomorrow, otherwise known as IYT. We here at IYT strongly support the youth liaison position. We respectfully urge this council to continue to implement this fund in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kat.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, good evening to the mayor and city council members. My name is Catherine. I'm a youth with long innovating politics, also known as HIP. I am in here once again in support of the youth advisory liaison. The last time I was here speaking, the city council made a historic vote and created the youth advisory liaison position. Now with the position created, we will continue to ensure that this is a fair position for our youth. If we start to look at the language for the resolution, the background states that the city council recognizes the importance of elevating and integrating youth of, the voices of youth ages 18 to 24. However, if we want to elevate and integrate the voices of our youth, we need this position to also support those within that age range. I strongly urge the city council to allow any youth, starting at the age of 16, to become the youth advisory liaison. Looking at Section 2 of the resolution, it states that the youth advisory liaison is supposed to attend regularly scheduled city council meetings. Furthermore, in the economic impacts of this report, it states that the youth advisory liaison may be paid a $50 stipend per meeting. This meeting began at 5:00 and will probably end around 8:00 to 8:30. If it ends at 8:00, the youth advisory liaison will be paid about $16.66 per hour. However, if it stops at 8:30, the youth advisory liaison will be paid about $14.28 per hour, which is under the state's minimum wage of $15.50. Really, any meeting under three hours is going to be under minimum wage. I am sure that the youth advisory liaison is also going to be spending time beyond these city council meetings. I am urging that the city make sure that the youth advisory liaison is properly compensated. On top of this, currently, school is in session, and the city has probably what will be its largest outreach available. I highly encourage that the city begins recruitment to the youth advisory liaison before the school year closes. In the city's effort to support youth, we need to make sure that this support is also reflected in the youth advisory liaison's position. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Emmanuel.
Emmanuel, if you'll unmute. Hello, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Hello, my name is Emmanuel Ashaolu. I'm a second-year electrical engineering major here at UC Davis. I also work with an organization called Improve Your Tomorrow, also known as IYT. I just wanted to comment and strongly support the youth liaison position and the SAC Children's Fund as well. We respectfully urge this council to continue to implement this fund. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Richard Wake.
Yeah, good evening, Richard Wake, Sacramento City Council, District 7. You know, I think everybody supports youth. I think that goes without saying, the city has some wonderful programs and everything. But, you know, I, I'm not really quite sure how I see the, you know, this position as a youth liaison being any more important than any of the other chairs and commission members that serve on other boards and commissions. And, you know, if, if we're going to uplift youth in this community, which, you know, I guess I'm not really opposed to it, I guess my thought is, is that let's give due power to some of the other commissions so they can have equal access, like the youth, youth liaison will. We need a, we need a police review commission that can actually, you know, implement policy and be heard by the city council and have a fair shake at getting their recommendations heard. You know, it's been quite a while since any of those things have been put on the agenda, you know? Or what about Measure U? And, and, you know, the, the public budgeting, well, I guess, of $1 million. You know, we really need to give Measure U, the Measure U Commission, a little bit more footing here, so they can have more input. So, you know, it's great that we're supporting youth, but, you know, let's, let's be fair about it, and let's start taking a look at these, excuse me, at these other commissions, especially the police review commission, and let's start giving them the authority that they need to implement meaningful police reform in Sacramento and give them a fair shake to have their viewpoints, or just as we would the youth of Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And our final speaker is Charles Krainatig. Charles, if you'll unmute. Charles Krainatig, if you'll unmute. Mayor, it appears we have no more speakers.
Thank you very much to the members of the public, especially the young people, for showing up and weighing in. Let's turn it over to the city council for, for discussion. This is a direction. It's not a, an action item. That's what council member Vang, Mayor Pro Temp Vang, has asked for here, and, Mayor, Vice Mayor, you're going to go first.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me, let me just thank Mayor Pro Temp Vang for, you know, for her steadfast commitment to youth and for her consistent work that she's done as a, as a school board member, as community advocate, and, and even in bringing this, this item forward. Now, you know, I'll keep my, my comments in, you know, brief and short. I won't repeat. I was one of the dissenting votes on, on this item when this came to council. And I know that the council decided to move forward on this decision. I'd still, though, you know, again, I was an advocate for Measure L, for Measure G, even our previous measure in 2016. I forget the letter now, you know? I don't know. But, but, and, and the fact that we continue to, you know, underfund the need and the support for our youth in the leadership aspect. But I still think that, you know, the, the approach to do that is not through this, this issue. Nonetheless, I understand that this is going to P and P, and I have full confidence that the P and P committee, and I don't sit on it, so I, you know, I have full confidence that the members of P and P will, will address some of those issues, you know? Some of the challenges, particularly when it comes to decision-making issues, and when we're even looking at not just age 16, but even some conversations about bringing it down to age 12. And, and the, and those aren't unremovable, but there are issues that, that I think need to be resolved. The question of, you know, geographical representation, and how does one person who would represent 30, a third of the population plus, because we're not just talking about, you know, I think the census puts that people under the age of 18 is about 115,000 in the city of Sacramento, but we're looking at, you know, also including those from 18 to 24 adults, 18 to 24 into this. How does one person be an accurate representation? Again, that, to me, that's a big factor. Why, I always felt that our youth commission is a better body that represents a more diverse group of folks in figuring out how do we empower and support the youth commission and give them. Maybe it's my time as a planning commissioner, where I feel that commissions have a, a dialogue role involved in that, to be able to have peers address those issues that bring it before the body. But I, I feel that, you know, the, the P and P committee will address those, plus the, the issues of- But I feel that, you know, the PNP committee will address those, plus the issues of support. Look, you know, I think it's the timing that's involved in having, for a person to be able to do this type of work. It's tough enough for us as council members to do this level of work. You know, again, I think those are all questions that I hope PNP will take a look at this as it moves forward with timing. So I'll leave it there, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Vang. I know the prior council moved in that direction, and, you know, to me, I just, again, I think that there's a better approach, and that's strengthening the youth commission and figuring out its role, just like we have to strengthen all the other commissions. So I'll leave it at there, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Talamontes, Mayor Protem, again, but I want to...
I think I'll go last.
Yeah, I want to make sure that members weigh in here. I know I have something to say, but I was going to hear from the other members. So Councilmember Talamontes.
Thank you, Mayor. Kudos to Protem Vang for always organizing. That's one thing we count on you, organizing and bringing folks to public comment. So kudos to all the speakers for your first time doing public comment. Good job. I know some of you attended my town hall yesterday. Good job. You're taking the right steps to civic engagement. I was disappointed that this council took this vote the week prior to having a new governing body, prior to having three new women on the council, and to celebrate a majority-woman city council. So I'll just say I was disappointed. And I know I asked some of you if we could postpone it to give us an opportunity to comment on this, something that's going to impact us, and nonetheless, everyone moved forward with it. So I do want to make that clear. To me, it feels undemocratic to have someone sitting at this dais at the city of Sacramento that was not elected by the people of the city of Sacramento. Many people under the age of twenty-five run for office, including Michael Tubbs, who won in Stockton with over fifty thousand votes, including the current mayor of Hercules, and a few council members that I recently met at the League of Cities, newly-elected orientation. And there's good energy out there, and there's more organizations right now that are empowering young people to run for office. And there's more people willing to mentor and share their experiences. Because what we're doing right now with someone at the age of sixteen to twenty-four is we're electing someone or appointing someone to represent the people in the city of Sacramento that could run for office. Anyone over the age of eighteen can vote and may run for office. So that is a concern. And if they are two-year terms, if someone's twenty-four at the time that they're appointed, are they twenty-six? If they're twenty-three, they become twenty-five. And if they're under the age of eighteen, now I'm thinking about work permits, and if it's a school night, they can only work four hours. And there's a lot of questions that I do have, and that is where I am comfortable with Personnel Committee, which, that's the job of Personnel, to figure out what works best for us and our commission structures, to take a stab at this, because I have a lot of questions. And I know that the budget ask is new, and I do ask that that come to Budget Committee. Anything moving forward on the council, if we're trying to strengthen our committees and our commissions, needs to take the appropriate process. And, you know, I just, I've met a lot of elected officials in California who would be young enough to be appointed to this position. And so are we saying with this resolution that their efforts to get elected were unnecessary or less hard-won due to their age? Those are some questions I have right now, and that's where, you know, what district will this young person come from? Is it District Five, Three, Two, One? What does that mean for that community? How long will the term be? I know two years has been mentioned, but maybe one year, give everybody an opportunity to sit at the dais. I'm also worried about the different groups. What about our undocumented community who can't vote, who pay taxes, who work in Sacramento? DACA, our residents that can't vote? A lot of people, you know, would love to sit on this dais, including many people in our disabilities community, our seniors. There's a lot of community groups, and that's where we have commissions. Commissions need to make sure that, we need to make sure that we take advantage of our commissions. These are people that are volunteering their time to help the city of Sacramento, people that have applied for this, and we need to do better. I know the next item is council rules of procedure, and it's an opportunity to strengthen our commissions. I just have a lot of unanswered questions, and I do support it going to Personnel, but I also do want the budget ask to come to Budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members aside from Mayor Protem, because we'll get around to her last, Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Protem Vang. I really just want to summarize what I'm hearing, because I...
Haven't heard it all yet, though.
Like, what I'm hearing as what, or how, who's coming after, please tell us what you would like further discussion at PP&amp;E. So for the most part, I'm listening, and I want to absorb, and I want to work with staff to, so that we can address at this council, because I think Councilmember Talamontes did say it was a little disappointing with knowing that in one week on such a big item that three new councilwomen didn't have this decision. And, you know, I might have twenty years of experience on a school board of what it is to have a youth voice on the board and what that may mean. So I want to look at all the concerns that are brought up, and want those to come to PP&amp;E, and I really want to work with staff on what are all the options and what does all of this look like. I appreciate Mayor Protem Vang's memo, which I look at that as an advisement of items to look at for PP&amp;E, whether we can stick to the schedule or not. Like, I don't want to hamstring us to sticking to a schedule when it may take staff more time to figure out something, because I can tell you the one thing I am very concerned about is the age. The sixteen to eighteen, when somebody is in high school. I am very concerned about, one, we know we need a work permit, but, two, are we only advantaging those who are homeschooled or have an alternative high school schedule? Because those are the only ones that are going to have the time to commit if this gets fully implemented. So that's something I want to hear more about and have staff work on as it comes to PP&amp;E, but that's a big concern of mine, having been a school board member for twenty years and knowing students who are going on to college, how intense their high school curriculum can be. So I am taking notes about what everybody is saying and look forward to this coming to PP&amp;E for further discussion. And I do actually support Councilmember Talamontes' request that if there is a budget request, it should also go for discussion and budget.
Sure. It will. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. Really impressed with the speakers tonight, especially our young people who took the bold step to step up to the mic and to express what they wanted to say today. And I hope this will be the first of many times that they will do that, because it's important that we hear the youth voice. And someone said it a little bit earlier, that they love and empower youth voice. So, you know, I go back to my years on the school board as well, when we were one of the first districts to bring a youth on to the board in the Sac City Unified School District. And it was interesting, because we had all the same questions that we have here today and at the last meeting that we had. We had all the same questions, and we didn't answer all those questions in one meeting. It took time to answer a lot of those questions. But when it was finally done, when everything was done, and that youth voice sat on the council, and you started hearing the voice of the youth and how it helped us who were adults in the room, thinking that we knew it all and what was best for the youth, the youth voice was so refreshing and so powerful. And I heard that again tonight. I heard one of our speakers talk about so refreshing, underrepresented, and needs to be heard early, often, and always. So I know that everything hasn't been answered, but I'm a big supporter of the youth voice coming on this dais and sitting in that seat. And I look at Councilwoman Vang, who calls me coach. Now, I could be offended if I wanted to, but it's a term that's endearing. When she calls me coach, it's because it's someone that she looks up to, and she knows that she can come to for advice. I can imagine that person sitting right there in that seat whispering to their coach about a certain item and information that they may not have, that she's going to be able to teach them. I can also go ten years from now, and that person may be running for office because of the experience that they've gotten sitting right on this dais. All of us needed some type of a mentor or a coach or someone in our lives that helped us to be able to get to that next step. It gave us the confidence to be able to take that next step. I'd be one of those people. I sit here today because of the shoulders that I stand on. So I think this thing is getting better and better as I look at it, because the budget that she put together speaks to the car allowance. It speaks to the onboarding. It speaks to the training and development. It speaks to the car allowance. It speaks to the basic services and supplies, the technology that's going to be needed. It speaks to the stipend that we're going to be able to pay the person in order to be able to do this job and be able to do it and do it well. And so when I think about all the things that we're doing, we're setting this person up for success by giving them this opportunity. And so I stand strongly in support of this, as I did when we voted for it. I stand firmly in support. There's some things that I'm going to talk to Councilwoman Vang about, about changing some things on this proposal, so that the onboarding comes when we're not on vacation in the winter break. It's just a simple little thing, just easy to overlook. But that person, once they get started in the very beginning of December, they're getting started, and they're getting ready to start in January, the onboarding needs to happen at a different time and place. But that's a small thing to take care of, and I'm sure our city clerk has already caught that. But that's, I'm in strong support of this, and I know there's some questions that all of us have. I have them too. But what I'm going to do is I'm going to give all my questions and my comments to Councilwoman Vang, and I'm going to let her mix them into the pot, so that there's going to be a big gumbo that comes out of this that's going to be very tasty, and everybody's going to be mad when they don't get invited to the party. Right? That's what's going to happen. Because when we have that youth sitting here, when we have that youth sitting here on the dais with us, we're all going to sit back and say, what were our greatest fears? What were we afraid of? What did we learn? It's going to be the question that we'll ask in the future. What did we learn? How did we benefit by having that youth voice at the table? So I'm a big supporter of this.
Be good. Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela and Luloi, then I'm going to make a comment. Go ahead.
Well, I'm never punching up after you again, Councilmember Jennings. That was beautiful, and I almost wish we could just stop. But I wanted to add that, I mean, I started sitting on boards and in decision-making spaces when I was thirteen years old. I was really lucky. I had a dad who said, gosh, we're talking about students' issues. We need to have a student in the room. And I wasn't like a slacker kid either. You know, I played sports all year round. I was in band, and I still managed to get an academic scholarship to UC Davis while serving on all of these community boards. So I definitely don't want us to underestimate our young people and what they're capable of in this role. I think that I'm so excited to see what this role can create, and I really want to lift up what Councilmember Vang was saying. Like, I'm not wedded to who is the actual structure person, but I believe we have people on our city team who are experts in working with young people, and just because we were young people six years or eight years or ten years or more ago, that doesn't make us youth development experts. Even when we were young people, that didn't make us youth development experts. It's a specialized field. It's work that people spend their careers perfecting, and being a young person's changing every day. I can't even imagine what it's like to be a young person today. And so I think it's just so important that we put the right city team around this position, and I'm really glad City Manager to hear your support for that, because they do amazing work with summer at City Hall and with the youth commission, and I think that they could bring a lot of great support to the clerks team, who work so hard, and to our executive team here, but they need that help, I believe. You know, I think that, I just want to say that for me, I actually support, I like the idea of one-year terms. That Councilmember Talamontes brought up, just to make sure that we're moving through regularly, that feels like the right pace to get someone up to speed enough that they can, also works a little bit better with the academic schedule. I'd like us to think about that a little bit, you know, in terms of when is it onboard? Is it summer? Is it winter? I don't know what the best time is, but I think we could try to sync that up so that our graduating seniors or other folks feel like they may be, and maybe that's something the youth commission can help advise us on. I remember one year I was planning this youth conference, Planned By Youth, and they scheduled it during AP testing week, and we were like, who did this? So I'm like, talk to the youth about the scheduling, and I think they might be able to work with us so that the clerks still can take a holiday break, and we can actually get them up to speed in a timely fashion. And I'm really interested, I think my biggest question even after the December vote, was how this individual will interact with the full youth commission and what that process will be. I think in the ordinance, we said at least periodically, but I think that's so important, because the point is real, you know, it is one person. And so how are they, like, working with or communicating with our chairs of our other commissions? How are they interacting with the full youth commission so we ensure all those voices are there? But I'm just really energized every time young people are at our meetings, so thank you all for coming online and in person, and just really can't wait to see what that feels like. And I think honestly, for me, what's most important is that this wasn't established in a way that we can adjust, that, you know, as we go, if we start to say, gosh, that doesn't, this isn't quite working, or if the young people in the role in particular are like, hey, this isn't quite working, we need to start figuring this out, it should be something different, we can adjust. And that makes me excited, too. We can perfect the model. So that's something I'm really looking forward to talking about at PNP and for many weeks to come. So thank you, Councilmember Vang, also for your thoughtful presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Luloi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you very much, Councilmember Vang, for that presentation. I think one of the youngsters from my district said it beautifully. You are thirty percent of today, but a hundred percent of tomorrow, right? Yes, thank you. And I strongly believe that. And I strongly believe that, a hundred and ten percent. The part that regarding this, I have a lot of questions, which we're going to discuss during FNF, PNP, I'm sorry, which is great. My concern right now, today, is about the youth in my district and some of the other districts that are wondering how they're going to afford tickets for their prom, right? Wondering how they're going to get their clothes ready for prom, which is a once-in-a-lifetime So as much as this has some meat on it, and again, I have a lot of questions, it doesn't really help the most vulnerable youths in certain districts that are sharp, they can make things happen, but they need some kind of economical assistance and help to be able to experience life at the age that they are. I have a lot of respect for youth, and I want you to enjoy every year that you have, because you get it once. So you're only sixteen once, right? And you can't have it back. But I want to make sure that those issues are also addressed during this council, because that's what sets up our future. When we have high school students that cannot experience the experience of high school and its events, that's a big concern as well. So again, about this, I have a lot of questions and concerns, but I just want to plant that seed also, that we have high school students that cannot go to prom this year simply because they can't buy the tickets. And for a city that's ranked number one in California, myself, because some of them are in my district, I'm ashamed of that. So, thank you.
Okay. Make a couple of comments. I spoke strongly in favor of this in December, and I continue to be strongly in favor of it. I do want to say, especially to some of my new colleagues here, that the vote in December was a statement of intent, is what it was. It was an important statement of intent and direction. But this body, this governing body, gets to decide whether... But this body, this governing body, gets to decide whether, whether we go forward ultimately, and how we go forward. And so, that's appropriate, given the fact that this involves a great deal of specificity in terms of how we do something that is unique, and as Mayor Protem Vang said, we would be the first in the country. I want to agree with some parts of the concern and disagree with others. And Sean, Councilor Luloi, you sort of stole a little bit of my thunder, but that's okay, you went first. No, no, it's good. What distinguishes a youth seat from other representative groups in our city? There is something that distinguishes young people from everybody else, and it's exactly that nice saying, 30% of the population, but 100% of the future. You can't say that necessarily about any other group. And so, there is a reason, and in fact, it's an inspiring reason, to say that we want to hear a youth voice every single week as we deliberate the direction and the future of the city. But here's where I want to agree some with some of the concern, with Councilmember Telemontes, and you've said this a number of times, and I really think about it, that an 18-year-old, a 19-year-old, a 20-year-old, a 22-year-old can, under our Constitution, under our city charter, can run for public office. And in fact, you cited examples of where young people in their early 20s have ran and have won public office. So, when I think about the youth seat, and when this was first brought to my attention, what I first thought, and I come back to this, is why shouldn't this be a 16- to 18-year-old? Or somebody who's under 18, who's a junior or senior in high school? Because then, you would address that issue, somebody who's not eligible to run for the office. And I also think that it's at that age, that high school age, where we want to inspire that young person, or the young people, to think about, could I imagine myself sitting on this dais? Well, they won't just have to imagine it, one will be able to experience it. And I think that might be a way to sort of reconcile some of the concerns, Councilmember Kaplan, Chair of PMPE here, that you've been hearing tonight, that let's look at a high school junior, a high school senior, and let's empower him, her, or they to want to experience what it is like to sit on an adult, on an adult governing body. In terms of the geography of this, and I get the argument that young people, high school students are busy, but so are college students. And, you know, that old saying, you want to get something done, give it to a busy person? I mean, there are a lot of young people who are really rightfully ambitious, just like we all are, right? Who want to be engaged, who want to lead, who want to do that extracurricular. So, why not give a high school student in their junior or senior year this tremendous opportunity? The geographic equity issue, Councilmember Luloi, I hear you. So, how do you assure that your district will be represented over time? I think that's fair. I think one-year terms are right for that reason. And to ensure that there is, I don't know if it's district-by-district rotation, but some form of rotation that would ensure the geographic diversity. And of course, we're always going to be appropriately committed to other diversity as well, in terms of all the other diversity, in terms of the appointment. So, I think we can do this, and I think we can do it in the right way, and I think Rick Jennings, you did say it so beautifully, and what's there to be afraid of here? This could be empowering. It will certainly be beneficial to us. And remember, it's a non-voting position. That would be a different story, and I'm not sure, I don't think I would be there, actually, because then I think it'd go right to the heart of that democracy and representation issue, but this is a non-voting seat. And I think it can only add to our deliberation here, and the outcome of the decisions we make. Finally, Councilmember Kaplan, in terms of time, I think the one thing that I just want to say to you, and you will do a great job taking all of this and working with your committee and producing something, I would ask you, as mayor, to please follow the approximate timeline that was presented here by Councilmember Vang, because the one thing, because if this is controversial, or there's a lot of different ideas or ways to do it, the one thing that we don't want to do is just let the clock tick. Because that can, you know, the inertia thing, it can happen unintentionally, it can happen. So, let's please stick to that timeline, so that we come back to the council, consistent, approximately with the timeline, and get this done in the right way. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Can I close?
Yes, please close it out.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
First, I just want to say thank you just to all my colleagues for your feedback. I will not be writing the staff report, I'm looking at Howard. We've already discussed about this, because today we didn't have a presenter, but what will come to PMP, what will come to the SAC Youth Commission will be staffed by someone from, Howard will appoint a staff to work on that, because obviously, Councilwoman Kaplan can't write the implementation plan, she's super busy. And so, ensuring that we have staff support to make sure that this moves along is going to be really critical. But I do first just want to take this opportunity to thank all my colleagues for chiming in. You know, I firmly do believe that when this young person is sitting on the dais, we're going to look back and say, hey, we made the right decision. I know that this young person will really change the dynamic, the conversations that happen on this dais, to make sure that we truly center young people, and really center our city, and reimagining what that world should look like for young people. I also do just want to address to some of my colleagues for the points that they brought up. Councilwoman Luloi, you know, I really appreciate you just pointing out, you know, the struggle that young people are having in your district and throughout our district, and thinking about how we prioritize our youth. What I want to say with you is that elevating youth voice and fighting for this youth liaison seat doesn't take away from the work that needs to happen with our young people in the city. We can do both. And I actually think having a young person actually strengthen the agenda to ensure that we get resources to those young people that are in your district. So, I just want to share that with you. And so, it only adds to, it doesn't take away. I also want to share with Councilmember Telemontes, who definitely has some really, really good points, and I'm happy to, you know, adjust the age to like, 16 to 18, that's cool with me, we can talk about it through PMP. But you're absolutely right, that young people at the age of 18 can vote and can also run for office. And I know that they absolutely can, but oftentimes, the reality is, many young people don't have the resources to run for office, don't have the human capital. For those that can, that's absolutely amazing, right? That they are able to do that, face those barriers. But we know far too often, that's out of reach for many of our young people. That doesn't mean that they don't have the potential. Absolutely, an 18-year-old can absolutely govern today, but I know they don't have the resources to do that. If they did, we would see more young people between the ages of 18 and 24, sitting up on this dais. Again, this is really about elevating youth voice. I still, as I'm listening to my colleagues, I want to share with you that it doesn't take away from our power, because one, this young person doesn't have a vote, right? It's really about just centering young people, and I just want to reiterate that. I do have some direction, I think based on the conversation, right? This is going to go to PMP, happy to support that direction for this item, but want to reaffirm that the City Manager's Office worked very closely with the City Clerk to ensure that we actually bring this item to the SAC Youth Commission for meaningful input on this item in parallel as it goes to PMP, because that's really, really key, Howard. I know I share that with you as well, and so, making sure that that happens. We have to make sure that we have meaningful input from young people in this process. I don't want it to just be a check-off box, but they're truly part of that process. And so, happy to do the one-year term. I think, I mean, it sounds like a consensus, as I'm listening, I'm seeing heads nod, looking at the rotation, I think that's a really great idea, Mayor, to think, to address the geography piece. And happy to, you know, I know PMP is going to talk about this, and you'll hear from the young people on the Youth Commission as well, that we should adjust the age to 16. 16 to 18, 16 to 24, I think I leave that up to the Commission, the Youth Commission to provide feedback to the PMP. I'm going to let the young people decide what that age range should be. I don't think we should be the one deciding what age range should be for young people. I think young people should be providing that recommendation, and so, that's my recommendation for PMP, is to lean on our Youth Commission, our Youth Commission as thought partners as we do this implementation. And just to note, I know Councilmember Telemontes mentioned, you know, if they're 24, they might age out. In my PowerPoint, I did note, because I want to make sure that it's aligned with the Sacramento Youth Commission, is that not any individual older than 22 can be appointed at the age, not anyone older than the age of 22 can be appointed at the time of appointment. And so, I just wanted to reiterate that as well. If we move the age to 16 to 18, we wouldn't have that issue. But if we do stay 16 to 24, if that's what young people are telling us, I think it's important that we don't appoint anyone older than 22 years of age, if we were staying within that age range. So, just wanted to, you know, share a little bit of those points. I know that Councilmember Jennings has said that he was going to give me his feedback, and then we're going to make a gumbo dish out of it. I wanted to just share that if you have feedback, please make sure that you, definitely, like, you can CC me, but make sure that you CC the City Clerk and Howard on this, because Howard will make sure to assign someone who's a youth content expert, to make sure that they're helping with the implementation of this. So, that's all my comments. I don't know, Howard, if you have anything else to add?
I do. I have two quick clarification points. So, one, we will go to the Sacramento Youth Commission for our discussion earlier today, to find out what characteristics we should be looking at for this person, and the type of outreach we should be doing, who we should be engaging.
Yep, and age range. It's on the PowerPoint, all the items, I can send that to you.
And in the summary that goes to PMP, will really be summarizing the discussion here for discussion at PMP.
Yes, because Lisa shouldn't have to write that. The staff should be able to provide that to Lisa and PMP. She's busy. So, yeah, I think making, yeah, she's taking sticky notes. Yeah, absolutely, you're right, City Manager. I think getting the information from the Youth Commission, based on this conversation, provide that to PMP, so they could really begin to also deliberate. And, you know, Councilwoman Kaplan might have some ideas on, as they're creating this, you know, having a working group from the Sacramento Youth Commission. I know I share with the City Clerk that even after that meeting with the Sacramento Youth Commission, it might be good to have a working group of youth commissioners who are interested in helping to support this, be part of the process, right? Making sure that we're intentional about input and feedback along the way is going to be really critical, critical if we want to ensure success for this young person. So, that's, I think that's it.
I think that is direction, and very, very good discussion, thorough, on all sides. Thank you all very, very much. Thank you to the young people. We will be back. All right. Let us move on to the final item of the evening, and that is to adopt amendments to the City Council Rules of Procedure. Members, of course, we had a lengthy discussion about this, some, I don't remember when now, I think it was January. It's been a couple of months, provided significant amount of feedback. I think the Clerk took a lot of that feedback, and then, and now we are back, being called upon to make some decisions. And I know to the public, this may seem like an archaic kind of issue, why are they debating the rules of procedure? Well, it's very important how the businesses, the city gets done, and when there are important proposals, sometimes controversial proposals, how are they decided? And one of the fundamental pieces of the suggestions embedded in here is that we want to strengthen the committee process here at the City Council, because there's too much randomness when it comes to the city staff not knowing what is a real priority among the majority of the council and what isn't. And, you know, certainly in legislative bodies, and this is a quasi-legislative body, using committees to vet the important issues, to debate them, to reach the necessary compromises sometimes within committee, then allows there to be a more productive process, once something actually gets to the City Council, and makes it easier for the city staff to not be torn in nine different directions when it comes to what are the priorities. And so, that is sort of the underpinning of this, there are a lot of details within. So, Madam Clerk, what's the, is there a presenter for this item, or how do we? I know I've got, I'm sorry?
Oh, it says no presenter.
It says no presenter, so, okay.
I can make brief comments, but I think you covered it in January, you, we met.
Yes, I guess I, I'm the presenter.
And what's bringing, discussed it exhaustively, and what's before you is the council direction from that evening.
Okay. Sorry about that, if I took your presentation.
I took my thunder.
I took your thunder. Ah, it's happening all over tonight. Okay, there we go. Let's go right to members, because we sort of know the issues, we know what some of the choices, if you will, are. I see Councilmember Valenzuela, and then Vice Mayor Gedda, who are up for discussion. Go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I do want to echo my appreciation to the Clerk, that was quite a far-ranging discussion we had a couple of weeks ago, and you captured it pretty much to a T in this document, so I'm really excited to be able to move forward, so we can just start implementing this process. I did have two clarifications, one that I think we discussed in January, and one that's slightly new. So, we talked a lot about reconsideration of committee motions, that the minority of the council wouldn't potentially override something that a majority on the council might support. So, that's in here for when something fails, if the committee says we don't want to consider it, where it can go back to council for reconsideration. But it's not in here if the measure fails, once staff drafts it and it goes to committee.
Explain again.
So, there's two steps to the process, right? The committee says, yes, we want to take this on, staff goes and works on it, and they bring something back for the committee to consider. Right now, as drafted, there is no reconsideration process if that drafted measure fails at committee, so I just wanted to make sure it was reflected on both fronts. If a committee votes something down, you get one chance at an up or down reconsideration vote at council, and then it's dead for a year. But that, I think, was just a technical, like, we talked about that, how we wanted to make sure, it just wasn't reflected fully in the document, so I wanted to make sure.
Okay, I mean, the idea is that at whatever threshold, the committee does not pass something, and that's to be debated, that the council, through an up or down vote, could decide to reconsider and send it back to committee.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, this is, so, I know the step of deciding if they want to consider it, reconsideration is drafted, but at the step where they actually get a staff item, there is no reconsider.
I understand. I think, I don't think, I don't think that was the controversial part last time.
No, I don't think so either. I just want to make sure it's reflected in the final motion tonight, that that's a process. And then, the second point, which was recently brought up to me, because I think it's a fair point, and I know we're still working at PMPE at talking about the commission process, and if the commissions bring something to us, and we say, gosh, we just don't think you should work on that, what's their ability to come and say, no, we really think this should be a part of our work plan for discussion? Obviously, once again, that should be reserved for very, like, up and down votes, and it should be just once a year, and you shouldn't be able to keep bringing something back. We talked about that. But I think if the commissions decide, hey, we really, really want to work on something, and for whatever reason, PMPE disagrees, there should be a one-shot opportunity for them as well, to come back with their work plan. It should only happen once a year, since we're just doing the work plans once a year, in theory, for them to come to us and say, hey, we disagree with this interpretation of our working plan, and get us to give a signal up or down. So, I wanted to put that on the table, that is one new thing. But I think it follows the intent of what we did for the committee process in general, so I just, I thought that was a fair.
That the City Council could.
That the City Council could say, no, we think that's an appropriate thing for the work plan. It would only be once a year, and it would only be if, for some reason, there was a disagreement between the commission and PMP. So, similar concept to committee. Okay, those are my two points.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. I wanted to thank the Clerk, and you, Mr. Mayor, and your office for taking the time to figure out how we best move forward. And, you know, I'm glad we had that very robust debate, because it was, you know, it was that real dialogue on parliamentary procedure, it was on how we actually can figure out how to function better. And I'm glad we were looking at different options and gave us time to think, because in that course and timeframe, if there's something that consistently I found critical, we have to address, and that is making sure that we're moving quickly, not hastily, but quickly, to identify priorities for our staff to work on. Nothing could have been much more visible than right after the storms, when we were looking at all the challenges that were, everybody was spread thin, and now, looking at the log and lawn ledge today, when I was looking through the log, and then, you know, I voted on the consent calendar with that log, that log is long, you know, we've got a lot to do. And therein lies, I think, my concern, and why I'd like to make sure that we go back to the initial point that I think is important, which is making sure that our committees, strengthening our committees, so that a majority vote at a committee makes a determination whether staff move forward, or whether they don't. And I don't, I've, you know, read through this process, and I don't agree that if an item dies in item dies in committee that we should come back and take another shot at the council. Like, that's exactly why we have committees, and that's why we have to strengthen the committees. I, I don't sit on P and P, but I have full faith that the P and P folks there are going to do their due diligence to review, you know, every, the work plan that happens. Because I actually agree with the, the point that Councilmember Valenzuela, Valenzuela brought up about looking at how we address the, the commissions, but having P and P look at the work plans of the commissions. I agree that P and P should look at, at the, the history and find, and the, and the background of all the people that are appointed and then make those decisions for the council. But I don't get to be part of that, but that's okay, because that's part of the committee process. And so therein lies, I think, the, the important piece that, that we have to strengthen the committee process to be able to make a determination of how something moves forward to the council. If not, we're going to get back to this point again. And, you know, the more I thought about this is the, this idea of an up or down vote coming back to council is like the council log, but with a second step process. And, and I think that therein lies the challenge. So I, I asked the clerk to pass out, and I passed out, you know, amendments to the language. Very simple. All it does is it says that in a committee, whether it's the, the law and ledge, P and P, or Budget Committee, you know, that if you, if you receive a majority vote, you move forward. If you do not receive a majority vote, then, then the issue, then the, the measure sits, sits on idle for a year. And it deletes the, the 30-day thereafter notice where you do an up or down, up or down vote. Yeah, I provided them the vote. And, and for the purpose of this, I, I think this is important because it helps us provide finality, not, I wouldn't say finality, but a focus of where our priorities are. And if we do that, if we do this, I do think that, one, it'll force our council members to work together to find how we refine our issues so that we can get to the council and do the legwork before we get to the council. So many times over the last eight years on this council, I found out that we tried to, you know, hodgepodge things at the dais at the very end without having to do that. And actually, the, and I, I thought back about the concerns about, well, is there a Brown Act issue with the committee? Well, you know, you're still within, if, if you're not in a committee, you're still within the Brown Act numbers to be able to talk to a majority of that committee to move forward. It also, I think, empowers the, the chairs of the committee to start setting a schedule to get things on and off that log, to be able to do that forward. So all to say is, you know, you know, Mr. Mayor, I, I support what you've done here, how you tried to make us move forward. And nothing in here says that you, that if your item isn't ready and you feel that, hey, look, I'm not going to get a majority vote, well, guess what? I can take a step back and work with, with the committee members to get to that point. That's part of the legislative process. So, Mr. Mayor, I, I would like to, you know, move the, this item, but with the attached policy here that requires a majority vote in a committee to move forward, in deleting the subsection I that has this, I guess I would call it the second bite at the apple or the, or, or I'll call it the council, council log part due, you know, item on there. And I would like to include the comments that Councilmember Valenzuela brought up about the commission. And I'm not sure how we draft that if that comes forward, so I'd like to.
Just as a quick aside, because I want to address what Councilmember Valenzuela said, it's actually addressed in our rules under 17(c) of the reconsideration, because I'm working with the city clerk, I thought about that.
On the commissions?
On the commissions, there's already a process set up.
Okay, very good. And if it's not, then I, I trust P and P will look at that and say, hey, we didn't, we don't have it there.
So I want to ask a question, a clarification to you around your, around your proposal as it relates to the council committees.
Yes.
Nothing in your proposal would change, some might call it a fail-safe, would change the council rules and procedures, maybe in city charter as well, that the city manager or, and/or the mayor can circumvent the committee process and put something on the agenda if the mayor or city manager chooses to do so. Is that right?
Absolutely not. And if, and I think that's important because.
Absolutely not, not or yes.
Absolutely is not in that, there, and absolutely, yes, you are correct. Okay. Yeah, there is nothing in there.
Okay, in order to make sure.
So let me make it clear.
I, I involved.
So, well, let me, let me repeat this, I think, to make sure. So, you know, my, my motion still maintains the status quo that the mayor or the city manager and/or can put something on the agenda. And, and I think that's important because if you had, say, a committee that was run amok, right? You know, you have that fail-safe where the city manager and the mayor could put something on the agenda.
Or.
Or, yeah. And/or. And, and that's important because if, say, the committee is, is lagging on something that is critical and is urgent, the city manager and/or the mayor can make sure we meet that timely obligation.
And if the mayor, for example, disagreed with the, the 1-3 committee decision, just plain disagreed, the mayor could take the risk, or the manager could take the risk, politically, whatever, and say, no, I want this on the full city council agenda. You know, we don't have a strong mayor in this city, as we know, but that, but that is a, that, but that is a provision that does give the mayor some ability to actually help a committee member, a committee chair who thinks their idea is worthy, even if the committee members voted it down.
That is, that is true, Mr. Mayor. I agree with that. And I do think that that is a, that's, that's the, that is, I think that's, that is something that should be noted, that the mayor has that ability, has had that ability, and we shouldn't take that away.
Okay. Just, I wanted to know what your proposal was. Thank you.
That includes the vice mayor.
Oh, no.
You know, Mayor, I, I joked with you before, I've joked with you before, Mayor, that I'm going to put a dollar jar up here for every time you mention strong mayor, and I think I'm going to need to follow through on that.
You know what?
I do want to say.
You got for beers.
For me, like, some of the, there's a little bit of irony in this proposal because we're kind of doing exactly what you're saying you don't want to happen. Because we talked at length about this when we talked in January about the basic fundamental democratic principle that a minority of the council shouldn't be able to override what a majority wants. And it was your idea, Vice Mayor, to say, we're just going to do an up or down potential reconsideration vote. And so that's the compromise that we reached. I think it's a good compromise. I think it makes sense. It's just a simple democratic principle. If five of us up here agree on any one thing, then we should be able to say, hey, no, committee, we want you to reconsider that thing, up or down, non-debatable motion. That was the discussion we had in January. And so I'll admit to being a little frustrated that we're talking about this again because I think that, that principle, and I'm saying this as a chair of a committee, right? As a chair of the committee that sees ordinances, that I don't like the fact that four of us can override what five of us might want to do because that violates, to me, the core tenet of what's in our charter. And so I would actually like to substitute motion that we move this language as drafted with the two technical changes that I just asked for, reconsideration, and, and, no, sorry, the one technical change, because Chair Kaplan pointed out that's already in the rules for the commission, to make sure that reconsideration also applies in the final section when we talk about a staff proposal. We've talked about this so long, I really don't want to repeat the however many hour conversation we had in January. I thought we settled on this direction, and I'd like to just move the item that Mindy has brought us forward. Thank you.
Okay, there is a sub, there's a main motion, a substitute motion, neither with seconds. I assume people want to hear the discussion a little bit here. Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just, you know, want to provide a little background for folks who might not have watched the very long and wonderful discussion about council rules and procedures, that I think the goal of this is about how do we manage workload? How do we prioritize? Because it's really hard when you have a lot of bosses that all have really big ideas. It's just a fact, and I've, I've worked in scenarios like that, too. And I think we need to have a way that we're, you know, we're managing the workload for our staff to ensure that they have the resources that they need and they have the ability to know what's the most important thing and the use of their time. So I, I support that goal. But I still do have concerns that, that I shared at the, the last meeting as well. And some of those are around the key differences. I think a lot of this is modeled after the legislative process, right? And there's, there's many people on this dais who have worked in and around the legislature. Some of them have been, let's say, the, the pro tem of the Senate and know a lot about it. And I think, so I see that, I see that reflected in the language. But there's also very big differences between how that body works and this body works and the key, key function being the Brown Act. So, you know, members of the legislature aren't subject to the Brown Act, and so that makes it really challenging. So if I had a proposal, let's say that I, I'm on, I'm not on a committee, like, let's say, law and legislation that's hearing a lot of policy work, if I was in the legislature, I would be able to go and take my proposal and say, you know, I think we should, you know, make sure we have, I don't know, all the sidewalks should be blue, and I should go, I would go in front of law and ledge and be able to make my case. And I would be able to talk to every single one of the members of that body and make my case. And hopefully, they would be able to have that conversation and then make a decision. This body doesn't work like that. And so one of the concerns that I have just overwhelmingly is if, if certain members, just equity, if certain members of these, of this body are not on committees, how do, how do they have an equitable shot at getting policy through? Let's say if there are four members that just don't agree with them on a topic. So I actually agree with Councilmember Valenzuela on that. And so I, I don't, I don't want to make any changes. I'm just wanting to put that out there as those are some of the key concerns I still have around the process as a whole. But I support the goal and the, of workload management and prioritization. I think that's something we really need to do as a city. So hopefully, we can, we can work that through in whatever we, we create here today.
Any, okay, very good. I'm going to, go ahead.
Yeah. I, I, I wanted to, and I keep this brief, you know, the, that whole purpose of workload management, and is exactly why I proposed these changes. And I just want to clarify for the record, for those who watched that long hearing last time and this time, that I only brought up this other version without prejudice. I said, I don't know if I support it or, or agree with it. I was helping in the idea development. And I even said, I'm, I'm going to reserve, you know, my own crazy idea to see whether I agree with it or not. And, and thinking about it, therein lies, again, why I think it's a bad idea, is that we, we will never get to a point of, we will, will continue to have these multiple debates over an issue rather than giving staff clear direction early on of what our priority is. And, and therein lies, I think, the issue. And I do think that we're getting to a point now where we can, with our colleagues, that we could start discussing things outside of just the committees. You know, let's make sure you know your, what your Brown Act number is, but start working early on with council members so that we get to the council and not, you know, show up to the council with one crazy idea. Let's start doing that early on. So that was the purpose of, of taking out, deleting I. And I just wanted, for the record, I just wanted to say that the reason I brought it up was not because I thought it was a good idea, I just said, let me throw an idea out there.
Okay. Councilmember Talamontis.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a substitute motion, right, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So let me voice some of my concerns and then some parts of Vice Mayor Guerra's new proposal that I support. So on item B, procedures A, when the council member submits request in writing to the city clerk, I do think that the council member should put what recommended committee that item should go into, whether it's personnel, budget, law and ledge. The majority of the stuff does fall into law and ledge, but anything that does have a fiscal impact that will cost the city dollars does need to come to budget. And so we do need to use these committees. And if our intent is to save Howard, our city manager and staff time, then we have to strengthen the committee structure. So, Vice Mayor, I'm okay with getting, we're getting rid of 2-2. Now, because a lot of us don't sit on law and ledge, and the majority of the policies that come before us go there, I do find it problematic for BI, though within 30 days, removing this piece, because that council member that proposed it, that had it come to law and ledge, should have the ability to come back and make a say, but then at the same time, a little, again, it goes back to saving Howard's staff, staff time. So I guess, city manager, I'd like to know your opinion on, on if the proposal does not receive sufficient committee support, what, what your thoughts are on this.
I didn't know I was going to get a vote, but, okay. What we shared at the last meeting, you know, the goal here, and Vice Mayor hit it on the head, is that we're trying to streamline and focus our, you know, our staff workload. And, you know, the log that was created was kind of a stopgap to, in an attempt to make sure we had consensus of the council prior to working on an item. I, you know, if you're asking me my opinion, it sounds like you are.
I am.
I'm supportive of a very strong committee structure, where, you know, if it doesn't have the support of the committee, it should just go away for a year. Everything else here lends itself to exactly what the Vice Mayor said, and that is that it will create potentially more work than if we just left everything as is. So, so that, that's, that's my, and there's, some of these other ones are just nipping around the edges. But, but I do believe that, you know, if, if we're going to do a stronger committee structure, let's have a stronger committee structure.
Okay. Okay. So, you know, I'm not ready to make, to support a next motion. I want to hear from Councilmember Kaplan and Councilmember Valenzuela, but I, I am concerned about, you know, someone that doesn't sit on any of the law and ledge, like, what can we do?
Can you reintroduce that?
Yeah.
Is that?
I mean.
That is still in play, and so, you know, the mayor or the city manager, and most of the time, and, and the mayor and city manager. So, yeah, that could come up at any point, on any given Tuesday.
So that's an opportunity.
Yeah.
Okay. So that'll give us an opportunity to.
Yeah, absolutely.
If, if the mayor wants to bring it forward.
Or, or the city manager.
Or the city manager.
Right.
Yeah.
And yes, I'll, I'll happily fill that jar with dollar bills of talking about the structure of this government because, because, let's be honest. You want to grapple with what this really is about here? It's about who has the authority here to actually make policy in this city. That's what it's about in, in, in part. And so we can joke about that, but, and I'm not bringing forward strong mayor ever again, I promise you. That'll be for, yeah, believe me, that'll be for some.
Two dollars.
Two dollars. That'll be for somebody else to do. But, but if you, but if you don't think that the structure of this government is part of the problem, including the, including the frustration, excuse me, including the frustration from all sides of the political spectrum here about not being able to get things done or move things forward well or fast enough, then we can have these debates all day. But that's in part what it is about. And so, yes, the fail-safe about a mayor and/or a city manager being able to actually assert some authority and bring something forward is actually relevant to what I think is problematic in this, in this system of government as the city grows and as we, and this is not personal, I've said it zillion times, couldn't ask for a better partner. It's about the structure. And so it's relevant to me, and it's serious to me. So we can joke all you want, and everybody will make their play here in terms of how they want these rules to work, but I'm thinking about the, the long-term future of this city. And this system brings a certain pace of progress, no matter what side of the spectrum, political spectrum you're on. So I'm not shying from it. Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, colleagues. I definitely am feeling the weight tonight of the work that you are putting on me as Chair of P and P. Know that I don't take it lightly. Many of you have known me for a long time, that I am kind of a process and procedure girl, and, you know, I've been an attorney for 23 years, so I kind of like rules and knowing what they mean and how to work within them. So I've listened to all of you. knowing what they mean and how to work within them. So, I've listened to all of you. I think I know where people are ending up, and I know this discussion that we had last month, it was a really good discussion. I know that we weren't all in agreement even then with how it ended up. So bear with me. I'd like to kind of walk through what I think would be a reasonable compromise, and if somebody would want a second after I put forward this, and then continue discussion, I think it would be good if you take what Councilmember Guerra proposed. So, on the first change per procedures, you know, honestly, this, this came from me, that when a council member comes up with an idea, that they need to submit their proposal in writing. So I would actually keep that a must, not a may. I think it's behooven on us that if we want to move things forward, that's how we also get to have a voice and a say, when we take the time to write it down, and have the facts, and have the background, and do that. I think it's incumbent upon us. So I would like to keep that as, as originally drafted. On moving to where it says standing committees, item B, I heard what Councilmember Talamontes said, what Valenzuela said. I would keep A as is, and then B, where it says, if a proposal receives a 2-2 vote in committee, that kind of, where you delete the rest, within 30 days, it has to come to city council for an up or down vote, as to whether it should go back and continue to be worked on.
You're for that?
I am, I am, I am saying that that's, that should be where.
Okay.
So if, if it, so as it says, if it comes out of, with A, a 4031 or a 21, automatically to city council. And then move to B, if it receives a 2-2 vote, that it is to come to council for just a procedural up-down vote, no debate, no nothing. And what the council members will all have is the written report and the background information that that council member put together, and what was discussed. So it's incumbent on us, again, to do our homework, and that it then gives a little bit of that in-between, of that a 2-2, where there, there may not be full agreement, still comes, and if a majority of the council and just an up or down says yes, then staff begins really working on it to bring it back for the council decision, because it's also saying, when we look at staff time and staff priority...
All right. Does it go back to committee, then? It goes back to the committee with the staff working on it?
Goes back to committee with the staff working on it.
Okay.
To finish it, to then bring it up. So even if it, if this, and then what we should clarify is when it goes back to committee, to staff work on it, if it gets a 2-2 the second time around, it, if it already got an up or down majority vote, it just comes to city council. Because then it's already cleared the, the threshold. So that's one piece that we would just need to clarify for this. And that...
What about 1-3 and 0-4?
They're dead for a year.
Okay.
And, and but, I always say they're dead for a year, but they're dead in the current form. There is nothing preventing that member from going, what, what happened?
Or 2-1.
Or, or 1-2.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
1-2.
Yeah, yeah. The, yeah, so D1 would stay as is. B on D, on, whoa, that, that, we don't do DA and B. That's weird. That's, that, sorry. The attorney and me is having, like, issues with the DA. That the 2-2 thing goes through the up-down, back, work on it, then to city council, and that if a proposal out of, out of committee receives a 0413 or a 1-2, it is kaput. But it doesn't mean, again, that you can't change it or amend it and have it go through the, the process again. It just in its current form, it is dead.
Okay. So that's your...
That's my motion.
That's your motion?
I second it.
That's seconded by Councilmember Laloie.
Just really quickly, hold on. How many motions are on the table, because...
There's, there's, well, I'll explain.
Yeah, yeah.
There are three motions on the table. Only one has been seconded. There's Council Mayor's, Vice Mayor Gueda's motion, which is the, let's just call it, the proposal that says, unless there is a majority vote of the committee, the item is dead for a year. There's Councilmember Valenzuela's substitute motion, which is reflected mostly from the discussion last time, which says if the committee votes, if the committee vote is 2-2, 1-3, or even 0-4, that a majority of the council can...
2-2 passes.
2-2 passes automatically. 1-3 and 0-4 can go to the city council for an up or down vote, as to whether or not the staff should be working on it, and it should be sent back to committee. Neither of those motions have yet received a second. Councilmember Kaplan's motion is, is a in-between. It says that if it is 2-2, that it doesn't pass to go to the council, but the council can take the procedural vote, up or down, to have the staff work on it, and then have it sent back to committee for consideration. If it is 1-3 or 0-4, it is dead in its current form for a year. 2-1 passes to the council, 1-2, dead for the year.
So...
Those are the three, and that was seconded by Councilmember Laloie.
And if it gets another 2-2 out of committee, it automatically goes to city council, because there was already that first procedure, 5-0 vote.
Very good. Okay. Well, that's additional clarification.
So if I second Councilwoman Valenzuela's motion, if I second, is that off the table?
No.
You would now need to substitute mine, because I was the only one that got a second. So hers would be a substitute motion.
Okay, Council...
For Valenzuela.
Let, let, let's hear, okay, Councilmember Valenzuela, second. There's only one full motion on the table that has been seconded. Councilmember Valenzuela.
This feels like Groundhog Day. So I'm gonna just say, I'm just gonna say, democracy is messy. And I want to honor the clear requests we're getting from the city manager to be like, let's not have staff spend a ton of time on something that nobody supports, while still also honoring the foundational premise that if five of us, when you say, who governs the city, we do. And if five of the nine of us say we support something, then that should be policy of the city, right? Like, that's my foundational. Everything else is extra, right? So, requiring a 3-4 or 4-4 vote to get out of committee is not a majority vote. That's not even a supermajority vote. That's 75% vote threshold, right? And so, we're creating a situation where three council members can stop anything from happening on this dais, which is not something that I support. And I don't think that we should be setting up a system where if you get less than that, and there's one or two members who say, well, I just don't like this, that it just doesn't move. Because that's not really honoring the principles of our city and our charter and how we do business. So I'm saying this to say, like, to the city manager's point about more work. And I know we talked about this, so this is gonna be repetitive, but it feels like the point needs to continue to be made. We're not asking for more work to bring something back for reconsideration. All that would be coming back is exactly what the committee saw. It either be the council member's proposal, or whatever staff proposal was at committee that the committee voted down. That would come to council, and it'd be an up-down vote. Like, we want that reconsidered, because we think that's enough of us on this dais think that that's important, and not those two or three members, with respect, we disagree. So, I don't like the fact that we're creating a situation where, as was mentioned before, people who don't sit on these committees are now stuck, because we don't sit on every committee. And that's, and that's not an honoring what we do for our member. Like, I can't tell my committee, my community, that I just don't represent you on budget. I'm sorry. I don't sit on budget. Budget decided not to do this. I have no voice in what budget does until the, you know, like, that doesn't make, that's not good either. So, I'm gonna go back to the original motion that I have here on the table, which is to approve the document that Mindy drafted, because this was after many, many hours of this exact same conversation, when we said, look, it's not perfect, because it is messy, but at least we can say, this honors that principle, it gives a clear process, it takes some of the work off staff's team's plate, because we're still not asking them to do every ordinance every time. And, and it still creates a pathway for five of us on this dais, if we agree on something, to provide that direction and say, we want this to move forward. That's democracy in our current charter form. So my motion is to keep the clerk's original language with the one clarification point I had, which was to add the reconsideration if a report back from staff gets rejected at council. That is what we talked about at our conversation in January. And I just think that as messy as it is, and as much as we'd love to not spend long hearings here at the council, that, like, I can't tell people that this isn't, this is honoring our, our principles as a decision-making body if we do it any other way, because there has to be a path forward, as messy as it is. And again, I'm just gonna cite the irony of the fact that we're doing this conversation again, when the whole point was to try to stop us from doing conversations over and over again. So that's my motion. Staff report with the clarification change, which aligns with what we talked about on this dais just a few weeks ago. Thank you.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
Okay, that motion. So now we have a substitute motion on the floor. I'm gonna hear from Vice Mayor Gueda, then we have one test, matter of testimony, Mr. Bliss. He'll testify, and then we'll vote on the substitute first, and then, if that fails, we'll vote on the main motion.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, and then, this is Murphy's Law, you know? You do give, give an idea, you know, and here's what happens, right? But, so, I will, I will support, you know, Councilmember Kaplan's motion here. And frankly, we, we're gonna visit this in a year. And we review the, the rules and procedures every year. And, and, you know, I will say this, I'm not, I was never a fan of the council log. And if this turns into a council log part due, then come next year, I'm gonna be asking that we remove that, that 30-day situation. Because we, we really need to be able to make tough decisions. And frankly, if you can't get another council member to support you on a committee, to get two people on a committee to support you, that means you haven't done enough legwork to talk about and advocate for your issue. So, to me, that is, that is fundamental. And so, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll, I'll end there and say that I'll support the, the first main motion and oppose the substitute motion.
Yeah, this really does feel like Groundhog Day. I think people at home are probably thinking the exact same thing. I'm actually not here to speak specifically to that, although this is directly connected. It's around Rule 17C that was brought up. This week, our commission, which I'm speaking as an individual member and concerned citizen, was greeted with an interpretation by the city clerk and the city attorney's office, related to a requested agenda item, connected to our 2023 work plan, that basically interprets Rule 17C as prohibiting us from agendizing a discussion item, not an action item, before the work, our 2023 work plan is approved by the PMPE committee, which means that we cannot begin our work without direct approval of the PMPE committee, and was not what we were actually discussing when we were negotiating the, the plan. And as I review Rule 17C, I do not see any language that explicitly prohibits our commission from agendizing discussion topics related to our proposed projects, priorities, and recommendations. But based on that interpretation, that's what we were, that's what we were greeted with. Now, we worked through it, and it seems like we're gonna get through it, but I still have strong concerns about what happens at a future city council meeting, or a future PMPE committee, that, where the Rule 17C is used against us, basically to prevent us from agendizing discussion items relevant to our work, when, like, especially when we have only 10 months, 10 meetings generally, per year, based upon the current calendar. So, I have some, like, I have several questions, which I'll, I'll also raise, and I would love to hear your response to that.
Yes, if I may. So, this, I know how this occurred, and it's a timing issue, in a way, because we do have a new process by which we want the PMPE committee to work with the commissions on a work plan. And, and to have the commission then follow the work plan. But here's the reason for it, and in the end, I think I'm gonna agree with, with you, surprisingly, or not. But, the purpose is, again, this is a staff workload issue. We want to make sure, and by the way, when the Police Review Commission does its first-quarter plan, please include the information, as we've talked about, the information that you are going to need from the police department and the city management, so that that can all be discussed ahead of time. So once it's approved by PMPE, you can then go do your work without any of the worry about the fighting that will go on about what you're entitled to, not entitled. That's the purpose of this. I'll make a broad statement. And Madam City Attorney, please disagree with me if you want, or Madam Clerk, it's okay, because you've got two great public officials here. If the Police Review Commission wants to agendize that the sidewalks in Sacramento should be blue, to use Councilmember Maple's example, agendize whatever you want. I mean, you are a commission. You, you talk about what you want within, and I, that may be the wrong hypothetical, within, within the subject matter, where the tension results, and where we are going to regulate the commissions in, in a hope, in a constructive way, is to say, you're not gonna get, you're not gonna get the city staff working with you, or the information that you need, unless and until we work it out ahead of time. That's what we want to do. But the idea that you, you, you agendize and talk about, I think you can talk about whatever you want. That's not our role, I think, to, 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 to basically say what you can and can't talk about. But, so is that distinction, please, Madam City Attorney, Madam Clerk, it's okay to talk about this, because I've got to tell you something. I spend more time on running interference here, on all of this stuff, especially with the Police Review Commission. And so to, at least clarify some of this stuff publicly could, could be helpful.
I agree.
Yeah?
It might help.
Okay.
Because as you all been talking, I've been working. And trying to work with both the city clerk's office, your staff member, Callie Rivas, on a way to move forward the discussion item at the Police Commission next week, that doesn't interfere with the PMPE process.
Right.
So I think we have a good recommendation, so that it can move forward on Tuesday night, and they can talk about it and supplement their work plan. And that way, because they want to talk about it, because there's a timely discussion item pending, based on this council discussion, and they asked the commission to do more work. But, I mean, that's, this is off-topic about what they're considering.
I know it is.
But I think that, what you're saying is correct.
But I, I'm telling you, I've spent more time running interference here, and I'm frankly getting tired of it. Because we go round and round and round here. The issue is, how does the city team work with these commissions? And if a commission is, quote, "out of control", I'm not saying you are, if any commission is out of control, the city management, the city clerk, the city attorney should not have to run circles trying to accede to every request. That, I believe, that's in support of the team. Hold on. So that's why the plan has to be clear about how the city staff, at all levels, works with these commissions. And what information needs to be fried, that's the purpose of it. But we should not be telling commissions that what they can or can't, or should or shouldn't talk about. That's, why do we need to do that?
And we're really off-topic now.
Okay.
I completely agree, Mayor. I appreciate that public clarification. And it really, I mean, it's, like, it's related specifically to responding to your request to have questions, because in order for us to have a, like, to be able to hone our information requests, we have to have these discussion items for our, with the full commission, not just individual members.
You can go beyond two minutes when, when there's questions and answers here, okay? Go ahead.
I have no more speakers.
Good? All right. Thank you.
All right. Now, we've got a substitute, we've got a substitute motion by Councilmember Valenzuela, seconded by Councilmember Vang. Let's call the roll on that motion, please.
Wouldn't we call the roll on the substitute motion by Councilmember Kaplan, which is the last motion on the table?
Mine was the only first, mine was the first.
Sure, it's the first motion.
And then Valenzuela.
And Vang was the substitute. We have to take the substitute first.
Perfect.
Yeah. Clarification.
Point of clarification, Councilmember Valenzuela. So if something dies at committee, because it gets a 3-1...
1-3.
A 1-3.
A 1-3. What is your proposal for it coming back to council, if ever? Can you do clarification?
So, I am moving the clerk's draft item. So essentially, if an item doesn't get sufficient votes to move forward at committee, which is 1-3 or 0-4, there'd be a one-time opportunity where the sponsoring council member could bring it to the council for an up-down vote for reconsideration. Under the other proposal, that would not exist, for the 1-3 and 0-4 votes at committee.
Except to be able to go to the mayor or the city manager.
Correct.
You ready for a roll call?
Go ahead. Do you want to make it?
I know, I just have to say, we're thinking, I just, I'm sorry, because you just keep bringing it up, and I just have to say it. The, the city voted down Strong Mayor multiple times, and, and they did it because they want the full council to be able to have a voice on these processes. And so I guess I just, I don't feel comfortable giving one person that much authority over that important business, but, but that's my final comment, Mayor.
Let's call the question on the substitute, on the substitute motion by Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan?
No.
Councilmember Laloie?
No.
Councilmember Talamontes?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Maple?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Guerra?
No.
Councilmember Jennings?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
No.
The motion fails.
Motion fails, fortified. Please call the main motion by Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Aye.
Councilmember Talamontes?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
No.
Councilmember Maple?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Guerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Vang?
No.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. That ends the council agenda for the evening, the formal agenda. Are there members of the public to testify on items not on the agenda?
Yes, Mayor. I have six members in chambers and a few online. The first is Carlos Valdez, and Kyle Williams, and Samuel Lewis. The first is Carlos Valdez and Kyle Williams and Samuel Lewis.
Here are council members. I'm here to talk about my experience when it comes to, you know, I'm a construction I came to this country, you know, and not knowing what to do, you know, not having a trade, I went into construction. I went into an apprenticeship program that made my life, to me, a success. I was able to get married. I have four kids, all of them, I haven't paid a penny for them, you know, to come to this world. And I am making still a good living wage. And for somebody who wasn't born in the United States, it is a big deal of difference when you join an apprenticeship program, and you get educated. Since I didn't have the chance to go to high school, okay, that was my way to go through a different, the older four-year college. You know, I graduated as a carpenter, carpenter journeymen, and thanks to that, I gave my kids the choice of going to college, of having them to choose where they want to go, something that I didn't get when I was young. One of them, my oldest daughter, she became an apprentice, drywall lather apprentice. My son, he just became an apprentice this week. My wife, at age of 44, joined the apprenticeship program. She just graduated as a drywall lather. And this is to tell you how much the difference it makes to have the chance to go through an apprenticeship program, and I would love for you guys to support, you know, this type of decisions.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thanks.
Our next speaker is Kyle Williams, then Samuel Lewis.
By the way, congratulations to you and the family.
Does it start when I talk? There we go. The little things is what really makes a difference in a city. And I'd like to thank all of you for attending, watching, and serving on the council. And how's the backhand, Mr. Mayor?
What's that?
How's your backhand? Little levity?
Little levity.
Giuliani cleaned up San Francisco by the little things, if you study it. Who's in charge of downtown, by the way, up here on the council? That'd be Mrs. Valenzuela. This is a win-win-win by minimizing the use of leaf blowers. I was never against getting rid of leaf blowers, but I evidently, 24 or something, there would be no more purchases of leaf blowers, right? Gas leaf blowers. By 24, is what I understand it. I'm for minimizing the use of leaf blowers because if you've been down here for any amount of time, they blow dust around half of the year. Have you noticed? Everybody that's paying attention's noticed. It's almost comical. Most people are away from work and whatever, so they don't notice it, but there's more and more people working in their offices, so more and more people are being annoyed by it. You would be a star if you took this on. So, anyway, I would highly recommend it. Blow once a month, for example, for the next four to six months, something like that. Just alter it anyway. I've got all the data if you want to get it from me. And the, one of the things, I only have 20 seconds left, it's impossible to make a point in three minutes, by the way, Mr. Mayor. Does anybody know how snow service works? Anybody have a cabin up in Tahoe? Do you ever hire snow service when there is no snow? Why do we have leaf blowers constantly blowing when there are no leaves?
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Samuel Lewis, then O, then MVW. Samuel Lewis? Staff, please start the timer.
Interesting how y'all love to walk away when we give our public comment. Y'all hold the bag, you got water bottles.
Excuse me. You want to speak? You're welcome to come speak when it's your turn. Otherwise, please, please respect the process. Go ahead. Please begin. Let's start the clock.
I was going to say, I haven't started speaking yet, if you could.
We started this clock when you entered the dais. Please proceed.
That's against rules of procedure, but that's okay, man. You do your thing.
There's no way to restart the clock on that?
Clock has been going, so you might as well speak, you might better speak now, please. Thank you.
Remember how you guys were talking about how you liked to hear from your youth? I'm your youth of Sacramento. I feel very disrespected right now. And I am from Katie Maple's district. I'm literally your youth in Sacramento, and you're not letting me speak. I deserve two minutes of your time. That's very disrespectful, Mayor Steinberg. I'm looking at you. That's very disrespectful.
I'm not sure. I would say a woman.
What? What was that? Maybe you can't even do your job right. Oh, my gosh.
Your time is complete. Our next speaker is O, then MVW, then Angel Lopez.
Do you want to? I'm fucking, that was so fucking disrespectful. Oh, the fuck, I had a whole thing planned. You're talking about how you support your youth.
Please, please let the next speaker speak.
I'm literally the youth. I'm literally your youth.
Please let the next speaker.
I want to hear us speak. That's such bullshit.
Please don't disrespect the next speaker. We do need to take comment from the next person.
They're not disrespecting me. I feel disrespected too.
Staff? O, you can speak to these microphones. Staff, please start the clock.
Start the clock? You didn't even tell me when I had to start the clock. That's so fucked up.
Why, why don't we move? Do you have any callers online?
Oh, you're gonna...
Wow, so we can't speak at all?
Well, if the next speaker would like to speak, you're welcome to right now.
Didn't even let me know when the clock was ticking.
That's all, no.
You've never, ever, ever, ever done that before. You've never done that before. You've never done that before.
What, what is your point here?
I did not even say a word to you, and you started the clock. I did not even get to speak. I have the right to say what I have to say. It is public comment, correct?
Okay.
And you're supporting, and you have all said about how much you're supporting the youth, correct? I am the youth of Sacramento.
What's your name?
My name is Samuel Lewis.
Samuel, take 60 seconds. Go ahead, tell us what you got to say.
Hello, city council members. My name is Samuel Lewis. My pronouns are they/them. I'm the youth of Sacramento. At the end of January, majority of Sacramento city council members voted to expand and fund the militarization of Sacramento police, even after events of the murder of Tyree Nichols and the community voices screaming and demanding those funds go to concrete supportive funding for housing, defunding the police, mental health, and community support. I'm here again to uplift those demands. One, we demand no more purchases of military equipment. Two, we demand the city council approve of all SCPRC recommendations. Three, we demand Sacramento city to create a traffic enforcement dashboard. Four, we demand to end Sacramento PD's use of pretextual traffic stops. Five, we demand the end of Sacramento PD's use of unmarked cars and plainclothes police officers. Six, we demand Sacramento's PD's gang enforcement teams and all problem-oriented policing terms be dissolved. Seven, we demand the removal of Sacramento police officers from the traffic enforcement entirely. Eight, we demand Sacramento PD to stop all sweeps of the unhoused. Again, eight, we demand Sacramento PD to stop all sweeps of the unhoused. Our most vulnerable population is under attack from the city. All police must stop racist harassing and stealing of unhoused communities that I am a part of. Again, I'm a part of Katie Maple's district, District 5, Oak Park. Again, I'm 24 years old. I am part of Sacramento's youth.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is O, then MVW.
I don't know where to start first. Katie's white woman excuses and her weak-ass excuse of a town hall last week, or Karina who received the most cop money for her campaign that had a town hall yesterday where, of course, cops were present, and her staff intentionally crumbled up a question from a resident in her district about her vote on the rook. Hmm, I wonder why. To the mayor who spoke at Karina's town hall, who acts like he cares about the unhoused population in this city, who claims he's working so hard to get beds open, but folks don't need beds, they need housing.
Yes!
To all of y'all, allowing Sean out of all people to give a presentation about women because Sean has such a great track record with women in our city, right? Go Google it. To Lisa, who shows her face at events for Tyree Nichols, showing support to Tyree's family, but yet her and the majority of y'all voted to further militarize SACPD 24 hours after attending his vigil and have yet taken any stand to make sure what happens to Tyree's family is what happened, what Tyree's family is going through never happens again, especially not in our city. Your talk means nothing to us when all of your guys' actions continue to show us that y'all don't give a fuck about us. Today's LA City Council voted a police robot dog through, so my question is to you, where do you draw the line in Sacramento? A rook first and a police robot dog next? To end, I'm gonna say this. This is our fourth week here, and we demand justice for all victims of police brutality. These are all men that have been murdered by SACPD. We demand justice for Donald Vulnerable. We demand justice for Jeremy Southern. We demand justice for Brandon Smith. We demand justice for Joseph Mann. We demand justice for Dejean Flannot. We demand justice for Stephon Clark. We demand justice for Darryl Richards. We demand justice for Augustine Morales. We demand justice for Liam Rodriguez, and we demand justice for Juan Carlos Rodriguez.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is MVW, and then Angel Lopez.
The US Department of Labor has sued Sacramento city council member Sean Laloie for a variety of labor violations as owner of the local Viva supermarket chain. The federal government alleges that Laloie threatened to deport employees who cooperated with an investigation into his grocery stores, underpaid employees, and employed minors in hazardous occupations. He's been in the feds' crosshairs for over a decade. Investigators in 2009 determined that Laloie and his companies violated federal laws regulating overtime compensation, minimum wage, child labor. Child labor. After each investigation, defendant Laloie agreed to future compliance and to pay back wages owed. But despite these promises, the secretary's third and most recent investigation not only revealed flagrant ongoing violations of the Fair Labor Standards Act, but that Laloie sought kickbacks from his employees who had received back wage payments in resolution for prior investigation. The federal government ordered him to pay $35,000 in back wages, which he did. However, because, you know, he's such a great guy, he had people impersonate investigators to gather information from his employees and identified which ones cooperated and threatened them with immigration, including deportation. In addition to forcing employees to sign unknown documents that they weren't allowed to read beforehand, he directed employees to lie about their employment. Laloie employed at least five workers under the age of 18 and children under the age of 16. He had them working more than three hours a day when school was in session, in excess of 18 hours a week. He also violated the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act. The lawsuit names more than 60 employee claims and violations at his stores in Rancho Cordova, Dixon, and Del Paso Heights. Thank you.
Next speaker is Angel Lopez. And following Angel Lopez is Barry Boyd.
Excuse me. There's no shouting from, I'm gonna ask you to, I'm gonna ask you to leave if you continue yelling out from the audience. You've had your opportunity to speak. Okay?
Not let us speak? Yeah, whatever, Steinberg. You literally have a person violating labor laws.
Come on. Please speak.
Hi, my name's Angela Lopez, and I'm here on behalf of the Dogzillery at CR2 Green Space. You guys are probably going to get sick of me because I'm going to come a lot. I can't possibly say what I need to say in the next two minutes, but I'll begin by saying that none of us that are frequenting the park at this time, which is over 100 people a day on nice days, we don't understand the process or who is in power to make these decisions that have been affecting our lives. You put out a survey that came back in, and 75% of the community wanted it to remain a dog space. Now, the narrative is that only people at the dog park filled the survey out, which is clearly not true or would have been 100%. Before the survey was complete, the city or Parks and Recs, we don't know who, came in and put in a temporary fencing situation that is unsafe for many reasons, which I will try to get to in a second. I'd also like to mention the big disconnect happening with the city right now. Front Street, SPCA, and Bradshaw are all doing major social media blasts to have people come and rescue animals because the shelters are full and they're starting to have to euthanize. So, sorry, I'm really emotional. So, to close one of the only accessible green spaces for dogs for people that are disabled like myself and elderly is unacceptable. The temporary fencing that is put in is way too small to accommodate the amount of dogs that go there. The fences come down three times. The second time, it came down on me. I have a torn hip right now and an MRI to prove it. I called 311, and the only results we got was them putting the fence back up. I can't safely sit within that fence with 20 to 40 dogs running around on the given day. Small dogs aren't safe. The actual gate that you go in and out of doesn't close. Dogs can open and close on their own. And I have so much more to say within two minutes, but I don't understand how a handful of disgruntled people can bend the ear of Rick Jennings and the Parks and Recs to affect the lives of hundreds that use that every day.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Barry Boyd.
Good evening. I had my hand up to speak on item, Agenda Item 30, and my hand was up during the debate as well as, it stayed up prior to Commissioner Bliss being called, and it stayed up after Commissioner Bliss's and, or, excuse me, comments were concluded. To that, if the council doesn't mind, I would like to have this opportunity to give my two cents that I wasn't accorded on Agenda Item 30. I am fully in support, it's a good point because the vote was already taken, but I still wanted to make my comment that I fully support Councilmember Valenzuela's motion, being that it was the democratic reasoning behind it and not the dictatorship and/or opposed strong mayor wannabe city council notions that were also up for vote. The audacity that this council had made the comments, if a commission has run amok or has gone out of control, that there needs to be a individual and/or two individuals to rein them in, being a city commissioner, being a city board member, a regular attendee of different commissions and boards. I have yet to see any commission and/or board act in any manner outside of its democratic oath that was taken by each of those commissioners and/or board members. For this council to make a notion as if there are outrageous behavior going on is, is, I don't want to use that adjective.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Richard Wake.
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to speak on, on public matters, not on the agenda. So, you know, somebody, one of the previous speakers complained about, you know, the vote on the rook and as it pertains to City Council, District 1, and expressing different viewpoints. And, you know, I called in two weeks ago saying, talking about this very same thing as it pertains to blocking people on the council members' Facebook page, not their personal Facebook pages, but their public Facebook pages. You know, a lot of us that have health issues and... You know, a lot of us that have health issues and other things going on that can't attend city council meetings depend upon calling into these meetings, phone calls and emails, and yes, actually posting people on Facebook, on, uh, comments on Facebook. And, you know, the other, after that vote with the rook was taken, I posted on Councilwoman Kaplan's Facebook page. I said the following: "Please, don't talk about African-American history when you voted for a rook." There was no follow, there was no foul language. There was no offense taken. Uh, no, no names were called. That's exactly what was said. And she blocked me from her councilperson Facebook page. That's not only wrong, it's against the law. It's against the law. And you know what? For, for those of you that know me, or even if you don't know me, let me just say this. I'm a poker player and I'm a good one. I never bluff, never, ever. I will take this to the media. I will take this as far as I need to take it. You guys, I've talked about this with council member Jennings staff, I've talked with, uh, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Bang staff, I've talked with Maisha at Mayor Steinberg's staff and Zach's staff. We're gonna get this resolved one way or the other. We can do this the hard way or we can do it the easy way. Restore me on your Facebook page immediately or I'm gonna do whatever it takes to get it restored. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is Tess Townsend.
Um, hi there. Um, I've heard the city's undertaking a strategic plan. Um, I wanted to know when the public engagement component will happen. It's really important to engage the public and something that, you know, ongoing and expansive. And, um, it's really important that that public input be well advertised. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay, thank you. Council ideas and questions. Uh, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have adjourned memory, so I'll go, um, at the end.
Mr. Mayor, I made a mistake. There is one more person, but Jack Blatner.
Okay.
I apologize.
It's okay.
Um, Jack Blatner.
Thank you and, uh, sorry for the false hope to the, uh, council members. Um, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is Jack Blatner with the Sacramento Metro Chamber. I just wanted to talk tonight about Measure O. We were so pleased that the city and the county reached that landmark partnership agreement back on December 6th. Um, and as we understand the text of Measure O, this made December 6th, 2022, the effective date of implementation for the measure. This is significant because according to Section 12100O20A, um, within 90 days of the effective date, uh, which would then be March 6th, yesterday, the measure demands that the city manager identify and authorize the number of new emergency shelter spaces that equals 20% of the minimum threshold. So we are hoping to, uh, to hear about those findings at council soon. Um, and also looking forward to the, uh, data collection reports, uh, that Section 12100O20G requires after March 6th, which again was yesterday. So we look forward to hearing from, uh, council soon about the city's progress on Measure O and its binding requirements. And, uh, we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Now, Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay. Then let's do council ideas and questions. Vice Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have adjourned memory, so I'll go at the end.
You do go last, okay. Uh, council member Laloie.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, just wanted to share some, uh, exciting news that came out of Twin Rivers. This year versus last year, their English Language Arts, their scoring is up an average of 6%, uh, which is very, it's a great news considering, um, what these kids had to go through COVID. And, uh, mathematics is up by 15% compared to last year. So I want to congratulate, uh, Superintendent Steve Martinez, the staff, obviously, um, the, the teachers and, um, the, the students for doing a great job. These are great numbers. However, we still need to figure out how we can invest in these students that attend these schools. So hopefully that's something that we can discuss regarding some of these expenses that are coming up and some of these wonderful kids simply cannot afford. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council member Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just want to make a couple of announcements of things that are going on in District 7. And to the, the speaker who spoke during public comment about one of our parks, uh, I'm not quite certain of her name, but she came with the service dog. And, um, I have a staff member here, Chief of Staff, Dennis Rogers, who's here. And if he can be of any assistance to you with whatever concerns that you have, he's available right here in the back to, for you to be able to speak to. Okay? Uh, I just want to announce that we're gonna do some tree planting this weekend at Reithmuth Park. Uh, we ask you to join us Saturday at 9:00 AM as we plant trees. This is, uh, Commissioner, Parks and Recs Commissioner Devon Lovell's final event in District 7. I, I would say that Devon has helped us to plant well over 500 trees, uh, in our district. That number probably is an understatement and we are so sorry to see him go. He has been an excellent commissioner and we have a good one in Joe Flores who is coming in to replace him. But we want to make sure that we send him away with lots of volunteers who are out there helping us to plant these trees. Uh, volunteers must sign a wa- a waiver and ma- and minors need parent permission. Uh, we, we supply all the tools and all of the, uh, the learning that needs to be as far as planting a tree. All that's being done in partnership with Sacramento Tree Foundation and all of our partner agencies. So that's gonna take place once again this Saturday at 9:00 AM in Reithmuth Park. And then we have a farmer's market at the Elks Lodge on Riverside Boulevard. It is back. And we want you to come by every Saturday between the time of 8:00 to 9:00 to pick up fresh produce as well as get to know your neighbors in the community. We have two District 7 Little Leagues that are opening up, uh, in the next few weeks. Pocket Little League is opening up on Saturday, the 18th, and Land Park Little League the following week of the 25th. And we want to wish all those young people who are playing, uh, Little League to have a great season. And then for the city manager, I just want to mention that, uh, the weather update is not looking good for this weekend. Uh, for the whole, from Thursday through Sunday, they're anticipating one and a half to three inches with the heaviest rainfall coming on Friday. There are flooding concerns, standing water, and local ponding in roadways. And so we pulled the report just so that we could be proactive, uh, with our communities and the things that are going on with our, uh, homeless population, uh, and any other thing that we need to do. So I just wanted to make note to the weather that we're expecting to see, uh, this weekend.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. And so our Office of Emergency Management, along with DCR, is monitoring this. And, uh, as it, uh, triggers the, the thresholds for us to open up our respiratory center for a warming and, uh, just the respiratory center in general, that, that will happen and this council will get updates as soon as it's activated.
Thank you.
Councilmember Telemontis.
Um, I just want to do a thank you to my team, um, Scott, Eduardo, and Kayla for hosting our first-ever District 3 Town Hall. We had a little bit over 100 people that attended. Um, it was great, you know? It's a brand-new community, North Gate, Garland, and Atomus. I had a, over 10 requests for a dog park, so I'll have to figure out how to get a dog park in the area. Um, but North Gate's coming along. The Hispanic Chamber opened up our small business grant program. So our small businesses along North Gate are eligible for $2,500 up to $5,000 to assist them, uh, with whatever needs they have. And we finally have banners, um, down Garland and Earth Gate. The beautification of my corridor is well underway and we have a lot of work ahead of us, but just thankful for the council before me, uh, that gave me those dollars to be able to help my community.
Thank you. It was a great meeting. You did a great job. Councilmember Maple.
Yeah, I just wanted to announce, um, we're doing an event in partnership with City of Refuge. It's an amazing, amazing organization in District 5, um, working with women and children in Oak Park. Um, and they have recently purchased and rehabbed an ice cream truck and they keep it out front. It's amazing. It's a great resource to the community. So we're gonna, we're providing, um, ice cream to, to the community at large, not just kids, but it's gonna be at Oak Ridge Elementary on Thursday at 2:00 PM. So if you want to stop by, say hi, get some ice cream, uh, please do.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thanks, Mayor. I actually have just an announcement regarding your town hall in my district, happening this Saturday, uh, March 11th, from 10:00 to 11:00, and just inviting the community. Uh, Mayor's office is leading that town hall, but my staff will be there just to support and also be there to take any notes. I believe, Mayor, you're having that meeting to meet with, um, constituents in District 8 that are in the deferred areas, but it's also in Metta View and so...
Open for everybody.
Open for everyone. So really encouraging folks to attend that. And then lastly, um, I do Mondays with my, uh, come walk with us with our seniors at the Pennell Community Center. I'm there every Mondays at 9:00 o'clock. Our group is growing. We started with only like five, seven people and now we have about 20-plus folks joining us, walking, um, every morning on Monday and it's a great way to kick off the week. And so just want to give a shout out to all the elders and seniors that participate in the program and just encouraging folks that if you live in the neighborhood and you have an auntie, an uncle, a grandma, a grandpa that lives around the neighborhood, please bring them to the Pennell Center and participate in our programming. That's it. Thanks, Mayor.
And, uh, before I turn it over to Vice Mayor, um, speaking of the deferred areas, um, I'm taking my deferred area council member responsibilities very seriously. And in that light, I have one quick budget-related request for the city manager tonight. I know we've talked about this, but with the budget season coming around the corner, I want to formally make the request tonight. I'd like the manager to please include in his upcoming proposed city budget $50,000 for each council office, $450,000 in total, uh, to support council members in their ongoing efforts and initiatives in their respective districts. There's so many community events. There's so many things that are going on that you're sponsoring that a small amount of money, I think, can really catalyze additional, uh, community engagement. Um, and so, um, I know a number of council members have been talking to me about that, maybe one in particular. But I think it's the right thing, um, modest amount of money, and I think it will go a long way in serving, um, our constituents and our community. Okay? I just wanted to get that formally on the ledger. Welcome. Okay? Vice Mayor Gata, you got an adjourned memory. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you. And, um, as we get going, I'll ask the, the, um, city clerk to put up the photo of, uh, you know, Frances Buford Pullen, Pullen. And, uh, many of you may remember, uh, the, those that were here on Tuesday, September 14th, in 2021, I presented a resolution recognizing the 100th birthday of Buford, uh, Frances Buford Pullen, uh, at here and we presented her with the key to the city. You know, an amazing woman that I got a chance, uh, to meet, but I'm disheartened and sad to share that Frances passed away on Wednesday, February 22nd, at the age, uh, and vibrant age of 101 years old, surrounded by her family, uh, in her home that she and her husband Don bought in Tahoe Park, uh, 1947, in 1947. It was a, a new park with small trees back then. Born in September 12th, 1921, on a farm, uh, in Florin, Frances Mae Buford was the youngest of five kids. Now Frances was interested in planes and flying at an early age. So when she graduated from McClatchy's High School in 1939, that's her right there, yeah. She quickly earned her pilot's license even before she had her driver's license. And in 1943, Frances heard that women were being recruited to fly non-combat missions for the military. She applied, got an interview, and was selected for training with only 1,877 others. She graduated with her class on, on October 9th in 1943 to become part of the Women Air Force Service Pilots, uh, known as the WASPs. And Frances was one of 147 women who earned their wings, their WASP wings, and served our country during World War II. Frances is always proud of her service on, in, um, in the WASPs, but her greatest joy was her family. She and Don were married on September 12th, 1946 and bought their home in the Tahoe Park House in August, 1947, where she raised her kids Jennifer, Chris, Pete, and Melanie. And Frances's, uh, child raising didn't stop with her four kids. Uh, she cared for so many children in the neighborhood. Uh, she called them their grandkids, their adopted grandkids. And that they, they and their parents continued to come to see her, uh, up until the very end. Uh, she also, out there, you know, was one of those who, uh, said hello to all the, all the dogs and dog walkers who were out there. Frances was an amazing community member. When we threw a parade for her 100th birthday there, she, along with ambulance drivers who she supported a lot, uh, police sirens, local TV crews, a caravan of folks, the biggest contingent with all of her neighbors and, uh, park dog friends. Uh, she would come by anytime and, and walk and meet her furry friends. Dozens joined the parade to honor Frances for her service and for reaching 100 years old. Frances was an inspiration to serve generations of female pilots and to young girls who saw that there are no limits on what you can do. You know, I got a chance to meet Frances and, uh, she knew everyone in, uh, in that community. Mayor, you may have, uh, gotten a chance to know her walking around there off of 11th Avenue and, uh, and, and her, and I'm sad but very happy for her long life, 101 years of service, all in Tahoe Park there, in that community. Uh, and our local cemetery, um, her service will be held on March 20th, uh, 2023, at 11:00 AM at St. Mary's Cemetery, um, i- in the Holy, um, Holy Family Crypt area. So, uh, thank you again, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. To a member of someone who served our coun- country, uh, I'd like to, uh, adjourn in memory of, uh, today of Frances, one of the greatest neighbors, Frances Buford Pullen.
In memory of Frances, we are adjourned.